Session.
Good morning, everyone. I shall ask Commissioner Mason to perform the acknowledgement of country today, the fourth day of our hearing.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge the First Nations people as the original inhabitants of the lands on which this hearing is sitting. Ngarranga chukururungu. Kanyi arungu guareba jarra ninanja juda mura nanyanga. We recognise Meijin Brisbane. Ngarranga ngokanda nanyi mura meijanya Brisbaneta. We recognise the country north and south of the Brisbane River as the home of the Cherubon and Jaguera nations. Ngamanga ngokanda nnyi karu panya Brisbane River nyar. Alalajara mono opa rira arungu mura richa juda ninanja mono guare. Ninanyi Cherubon nga mono jaguro na. And we pay respect to the Gadigal people of the Eora nation. Their land is where the city of Sydney is now located. We pay deep respects to all elders, past, present and future. And especially elders, parents and young people with disability. I'd also like to read a content warning for today's hearing. This hearing will include evidence that may bring about different responses for people. It will include accounts of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of First Nations parents with disability and their experiences with child protection systems across Australia. The First Nation viewers, please note that the evidence will describe removal. And if the evidence raises concerns for you, please contact the National Counselling and Referal Service on 1-800-421-468. You can also contact Lifeline 131114. Beyond Blue on 13 000 224 636. Or your local Aboriginal medical services for social and emotional wellbeing support. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, Mr Crowley. Oh, I think I've been reminded of the additional appearance today from the state of South Australia. Are there any additional appearances to announce? Apparently not.
It seems not at this time, Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr Crowley. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Chair, this morning, the first witness we have to give evidence is Shontaya. She'll be giving evidence by AVL. And she has provided a statement, which is in tender bundle part A, volume one, at tab 33. And I tend to that statement, if it could be marked as exhibit 8.16, please.
Yes, that can be done.
And associated with the statement, there are other materials which are in part A, tabs 34 to 63. I tend to those, and if they could be marked, exhibits 8.161 to 8.1630, please.
Yes, that also can be done. Thank you. And I think we have Shontaya on the screen. Good morning and thank you very much for coming to the Commission to give evidence.
Morning.
If you would be so kind as to follow the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate, who will administer either the oath or affirmation, whichever it is, to you. Thank you very much.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr Crowley will ask you some questions.
Good morning, Shontaya. Can you hear me? See me okay?
Good morning, I can.
Shontaya, you're a First Nations woman from South Australia?
Yes.
And you're a proud mum of three children?
Yes.
You've given a statement to the Commission about yourself and about your children?
Yes.
And the statements, the things you say in your statement, are they true as best as you believe?
Yes, they are true.
Now, Shontaya, I want to ask you some things, first of all, just about yourself and when you were growing up.
Yep.
Could you tell us, without getting too specific, just generally about your growing up, where did you grow up?
On an Aboriginal community.
And when you grew up on the community, did you go to school there?
Yeah, I did.
Did you do your primary school while you were living in the community?
Yes.
And when you were growing up, who were you living with?
My mum and dad.
And did you have brothers and sisters?
Yeah, I had one brother and two sisters.
And what was school like for you, primary school?
I enjoyed primary school, got along with all the kids.
Now, when you were at primary, did you learn about your culture?
Yes, I did.
And did you also learn language as well?
Yes.
Now, when you were a teenager, when you were around 14, did you move from the community to Adelaide?
Yes.
Could you just tell us about that? What was it like moving to Adelaide?
It was good. I liked it, yeah.
And did you move there so you could go to high school?
Yes.
What year level did you reach at high school?
Year 11 I completed. I started year 12, but then I finished year 12. Started year 12, but then I went to work.
Where did you go to work?
It was at a place called Adelaide CDEP.
And what sort of work were you doing there?
I was doing courses, like business administration course. I completed Business One and Business Two, doing that certificate with actually working.
And this was through the Adelaide CDEP?
Yeah, yeah.
And those courses that you did, were they courses done through the TAFE College?
Yes.
And how long did it take you to do the courses?
About 12 months. I was also doing hospitality as well.
Did you finish that one?
No, I got changed from hospitality to the business admin, yeah.
Now, when you finished those, did you go to work later at a factory for a time?
Yeah, I was actually, yeah, I was working at a factory, a seafood factory.
And then after that, did you go and then get another job doing some admin work?
Yeah, I was doing receptionist work, yeah.
How did you find that?
I actually enjoyed it. I liked it. I was working in an office by myself, so I did everything all on my own. And, you know, someone actually taught me how to do things and done it pretty quickly. So that was really good.
You say in your statement that you did that job for a few months.
Yeah.
But you had to leave to care for your brother because he got sick.
Yeah.
Was your brother in Adelaide?
Yes.
And you became his carer then?
Yes.
For a long time?
Yes.
During that time you were caring for him, you weren't doing the admin job anymore? Now, I want to ask you now, Shontaya, about your children.
Yes.
You've got three children. You had your first one, your first child, when you were in your early twenties?
Yes.
And at that time, can you just tell us about the type of support that you had when you had your baby?
When I, my baby or my first son?
Yes.
I had a lot of support with my first son. Like, I had my mum around and my family around when I had my first son.
Now, was mum living nearby as well?
She was living with me, yeah. I was living with my mum.
And other family as well?
Yes.
Were they nearby?
Yeah, I had my sister live nearby.
Now, a couple of years after that, you talk about having your second child.
Yes.
But you say that was a little bit harder because you had two kids.
Yeah. I lived on, I had my own house and I had my brother living with me who I was caring for as well, so.
So it was a bit harder, but you were able to cope with that?
Yeah, I was doing it on my own, yeah.
Did you still have support from mum?
Um, not as much as just with my first son, yeah.
One of the things you say in your statement is that you had a relationship with the father of your second child, but your family didn't like him too much.
Yes.
Was that a reason why you didn't have as much contact with mum anymore?
Yes.
Now, do you know why they didn't like him much?
Because he was abusive to me.
What sort of things, when you say abusive, what sort of things would he do?
He would hit me and stuff.
How often would that happen, Shontaya?
Couple of times.
Now, you then later had your third child, your youngest?
Yes.
And you stayed as being the person, mum, and looking after them, the main role of looking after them, until the Department of Child Protection got involved in October 2019?
Yes.
Now, I want to ask you a little bit more about the relationship with the father, with your ex.
Yes.
Now, he was the father of your two youngest children?
Yes.
And you told us that he was abusive. Did that happen throughout the whole time that you were with him?
Yeah, most of the time, since I was pregnant. When I became pregnant, he started becoming abusive towards me.
Now, pregnant with your first, your second child or your third child?
Both.
Both?
Yes.
And in your statement, you talk about the relationship being like chronic abuse.
Yes.
Is that how it was?
Yeah, it was like that.
Now, even though that was happening, you stayed with him for a few years?
Yes.
Now, you do say in your statement that sometimes you did try and leave him, but you'd end up going back.
Yes.
Just tell us about that, if you could, Shontaya. How was it?
I tried to leave him, but like, he would always use that excuse as committing, tried to commit suicide and stuff. So I didn't really know how to get out of that relationship.
And so you'd keep going back to him again?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, when he was abusive at home, what would you do to look after the children?
Well, I just, I looked after my children, but it was like, it was hard to pay attention to them when I was getting abused.
And so you would leave with the children when you could?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the relationship with your ex, you say that it ended in 2019?
Yes.
And you would still see him sometimes, but not very often? Is that how it was in 2019?
Yes, because we had contact with our children.
Yes. And you talk about in the end of the year in 2019, in December, that you went to his home. He asked you to come over there and you went over to the home to look at some Christmas presents?
Yes.
For the kids?
Yes.
Tell us about that, Shontaya. What happened then?
I got assaulted, yeah.
And that was quite...
I wanted to leave, but he wouldn't let me leave, so he bashed me and, yes, just, yeah, hard to talk about, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. But you had some pretty bad injuries from that?
Yeah, I had three fractured ribs and, um, black eye. I was bruised up from him. He'd beaten me up pretty bad.
You had to go to the hospital for that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, after that, the police ended up arresting him and he got charged?
Yes.
Since that time, you haven't seen him since that time, have you?
No.
And when this happened, around Christmas of 2019?
Yes.
You'd already ended the relationship with him earlier in that year?
Yes.
Now, the, in, earlier this year, you were able to go and see the Aboriginal Family Support Service, AFSS?
Yes.
And they helped you to get involved with the domestic violence program?
Yes.
Has that been helpful for you?
Yeah, it has been helpful. I've been doing counselling every week. I get that every week. And did some DB workshop, so it's been really helped me with my domestic violence. So I know not to go back to him.
And that domestic violence, that's still something that you feel, that still worries you now?
Yes, it still affects me, yeah.
I want to ask you then about some testing that was done when you had, after your children were born?
Yes.
Now, you say in your statement that after the children were born, you had some genetic testing done for them?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
And they found that there was a chromosome duplication or abnormality?
Yes.
Now, that was the first that you knew about that?
Yes.
And did you have some testing then as well to see whether that was something that might run in the family on your side?
Yeah, I had some testing myself and the father of my children had some testing, so we both got it done. So they had told me that the testing did come from me, so I've got the same condition, the same condition, the chromosonism, yeah.
And it was described to you as something that might, when you're younger?
Yes.
Have a development delay for the children?
Yes.
They might have delays in their language or speech or other learning?
Yes.
Now, from yourself, you weren't aware that you had that chromosome condition when you were a kid?
Yeah, no, I've never had problems in my learning when I was little. I only had problems with my hearing, like, that was it. Like, I just had to get tubes in my ears and that was it.
Yeah. Now, in, during the time that you were still with your partner, sometimes when you would leave, you would go and stay at the women's shelter?
Yes, yes.
And you talk about in your statement, in early 2018, being at a women's shelter. And you got in contact, or a service called Kangarundi got in contact with you?
Yes.
Did you know about that service before they came to see you at the shelter?
No, that was the first time I heard of that service. They just told me that they were there to protect me from the DCP. I didn't know there was actually a part of them.
Hmm. That's the department you're talking about, the DCP?
Yes.
Yeah. And up until this time, this is early 2018, had you had any contact with the department about the kids?
Um, like up until now or?
Yeah, up, no, in 2018, when you were at the women's shelter and Kangarundi came along?
Yes.
Had you heard anything from the department?
No, I didn't even, I've never heard from DCP at all. Didn't even know, like, I had notifications or anything. Basically, my children was removed.
Yeah, so later on, when the department did get involved with the children, you say that you found out that there'd been about 23 notifications in the past?
Yes.
Now, did you know anything about those before the department came along?
No, no.
No one had ever spoken to you about these things to investigate?
No.
Now, when you had Kangarundi helping you?
Yes.
Did you find them to be a good help?
They was actually, yeah, they was a good help with me. They did support me, yeah.
What sort of things could they do for you?
They came over to my home and whatever me and my children needed, they'll support us. And they would get things and even help me to appointments, what I need, even financial counselling. Like, with Kangarundi, I just heard that they deal with people with shelters. Like, they help families when I heard about them.
And then, after you'd been with them for a while?
Yes.
In about February 2019, you say that they closed your file?
Yeah, they did, yeah. Before I moved in, I had a house that I moved into, my new property, and they closed me off before I went and moved into my new house with my kids.
Yeah. Now, around that time, in February 2019, by then you'd already split up with your ex?
Yeah, yeah.
And so it was just you and the kids then?
Yes.
Living in the house together, I mean?
Yes.
Now, you still had then your family around you to support you too?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Mum and your sister that you talked about?
Yes.
But also extended family sometimes?
Yes.
And when Kangarundi closed your file, did they talk to you about whether you needed more support to keep going?
No. No, they just said that they could see I was doing good and I was doing good with my kids. So they just, they didn't refer me to anyone and they said I was, yeah, just closed me off.
And how were you doing then, after Kangarundi stopped seeing you? Were you going okay then?
I was actually in and out of hospital a lot due to kidney stones. And I had to have three surgeries, so I had a lot of physical injury with myself and stuff. So I was actually struggling a bit, yeah.
This is throughout the year in 2019?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, when you had to go and go to the hospital or go and see about the kidney stones?
Yes.
Was mum or family around to look after the kids?
I had my dad watching my kids, yeah.
Now, you talk about in your statement about your family being a tight family?
Yes.
And that usually there's a lot of support from the family? But later in 2019, you say that there was a lot of things going on with the family and there'd unfortunately been a few family members pass away?
Yes.
Could you just tell us about that, Shontaya? When that happened, how did that affect you and the support from the family?
Um, it was really, well, when my auntie passed away, my kids wasn't actually in my care. They were in my mum's care, in my mum's care, so that was a bit hard for, it'd been really hard for her as well.
Hmm. And your auntie especially that you talk about, you were very close to her?
Yes.
And that was a big loss for you?
Yeah, that was a big loss for me, yeah.
And all the family?
Yes.
Now, you say during that time and also at other times in the year, there was a lot of sorry business to attend to?
I also had like my auntie, my dad's sister that also passed away the same year, and my best friend in the same year, so that was just really hard.
Hmm. Now, when those things happened, was it the case that mum wasn't around to look after the kids like normal? She had to go out of town and go and see family and do sorry business out there too?
Yes.
Now, you also say in your statement that on top of that, your sister was also having some issues too around this time?
Yes.
Because of those things, did you have any other support with you, with the kids at the time?
No. When I had my children in my care, didn't really, in my care, didn't really have much support because everybody was all going through their own stuff.
And you also describe in your statement that you also had to go to hospital because you had an abscess in your foot that became infected?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
And that was quite serious? You had to stay there for a few days in the hospital?
Yes.
Now, because of your own physical health at the time?
Yes.
And not having the support, did you find it was hard to do all the chores and things at home that you had to do?
It was very hard because, like, I couldn't even walk properly, like, couldn't even walk. So I was gonna get surgery done, but I didn't need to because they kept me on the drip. Sorry.
And did you try and see if you could get someone else to help at that time?
I went to, my sister actually came and had to pick up the kids. And she took them to her house, so she watched them there while I was actually in hospital. And the day I actually come out of hospital to come back home to my kids, my little one actually got sick and I had to take him to the hospital. So by the time that I brought him back home from the hospital to even clean up, I had DCP actually there to remove my kids.
And it was around that time then that they said that they were going to remove the kids?
Yes.
Now...
They went into my home without us there, without me or the kids there. And they seen how messy it was, so they said they had no choice but to remove my kids. And they seen how messy it was, so they said they had no choice but to remove my kids.
Now, you say that they, when they did that, they were initially going to take the kids for three months?
Yeah.
Um and they said that it was because of neglect was one of the things that they said?
Yeah.
But also that um you had missed some appointments, some medical appointments?
Yeah.
Um was there was there trouble or problem getting to the medical appointments?
I was actually going into surgery um for my kidney stone the times that my children had their appointments and I missed them.
And you say they also um said that another reason was because of domestic violence at the home?
Apparently they heard that I was going back to the father of my children, so that's um a reason why they took my kids away.
Uh you weren't with the father anymore?
Oh no, he was actually up in um Sydney.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Now, when this, when the department um did this, you say in your statement that they they told you you could have a chance to um make things better at home and if you could make it make it better for for the kids and say for that they could um again come back to the home to live with you.
Yeah.
Now, it was around then that you went then and saw your your lawyer at the Aboriginal Legal Rights Movement?
Yeah.
And and they helped you with dealing with the department?
Yeah.
Now, when when you saw them, uh from talking to them, you decided that you would you would try and do the things the department was asking you to do?
Yeah.
So you could get the kids back?
Yeah.
What sort of things did you have to do?
Well, um they didn't really tell, I had to get a mental health check. That was one of them and a parenting capacity assessment test.
Yeah, I I'll ask you about those in a minute, Shontay, but did they uh did they say you had to do any any program or any service? They tell you about those things at all?
No, they didn't tell me. I don't know. I did everything, sorry. Um I actually got myself into parenting courses and stuff. Uh they didn't actually tell me what I had to go and do to address any of my issues.
Hmm, so you went and did some. What what things did you do?
I went and actually got myself into Circle of Security. So I've done that. I've done a developing resilience course um for children. That and a a D V workshop, yeah.
And how did you get in contact with those services to do those courses?
Ring Centre Care myself and um asked them if they had any programs or anything going on, yeah.
And did your lawyer help you with this too?
Um yeah, uh I no, no, I got myself into it and I just told her what I did, yeah.
And did you tell the department about doing those courses?
I actually, um yeah, I told them that I was doing that, yeah.
Yeah, you you talked about having to get a a mental health assessment and a parenting capacity assessment.
Yeah.
I'll I'll talk to you about the mental health assessment first.
Mm-hmm.
Um now with that one, could you just describe for us, uh Shontay, what did you have to do?
Um I just had to sit there and talk to him a lot about my childhood, what I went through, um basically, that's all the stuff I had to talk about with him.
Hmm, and this was with a a psychiatrist that um the department had arranged for you to see?
Yeah.
Uh and that was okay?
Yeah, that was okay. He said he didn't see me having a mental um a mental illness.
Hmm, now, just on that, Shontay, uh up until this time, when you saw this um psychiatrist for the mental health assessment?
Yeah.
Um you'd never been told that you had a a mental illness or a intellectual disability?
No.
The only thing that you knew about was the the chromosome uh abnormality test that had been done when your kids were born?
Yeah.
Now, I want to ask you then about the the parenting capacity assessment.
Yeah.
Uh now this happened in around January two thousand and twenty? That's when you saw the the psychologist from the department?
Yeah.
Uh how long after? You told us before about seeing your ex, your children's father, and and there was a domestic violence assault? How long after that was it that you had to do the parenting capacity assessment?
It was nine days after I was assaulted. Yeah, nine days, yeah.
And how were you feeling at the time?
I was like traumatised still, um I was very emotional, um I was in pain and I had in head injury as well. Um I've been hit over the head so many times. So that was really hard for me, yeah.
And did you did you tell the the psychologist about those things?
Uh yeah, I did tell her about it and I said I didn't really want to go in too much details because um it was, I didn't wanna bring it all up again.
Yeah. Now, as part of that assessment, uh you had to you had to do a um an intellectual capacity test or assessment?
Yeah.
Um where the test was explained to you by the psychologist what you had to do?
Yeah.
And you say in your statement that you found that to be confusing, the instructions that were given to you?
Yeah.
Just tell us about that test, what it what it involved and why it was confusing.
She just had a book, just like all pictures. And on the book with all the pictures, it like it was all sort of shapes, so she was just telling me to match up this shape. Like what's the difference between it, is that the bigger size or smaller size? Um that was about it and that's all it had on the book.
Hmm, and you say was what she was telling you to do was confusing?
Yeah.
What what was the part that was confusing, you think?
It looked like a little children's book, like kid, you know, like I'm looking at kids' books.
Now, you say that um your, the psychologist also spoke to you about um a a an incident that had happened when um your youngest child was was dropped by your cousin, by a younger cousin?
Yeah.
Um now, that incident, can you tell us what was happening at that time? Why your younger cousin had your youngest child?
There was a lot of kids in the house because we was all family around each other when, because um my auntie passed away. So I was actually at the stove and I'm cooking. So I can't turn, just like I couldn't turn my back when I'm trying to cook all the kids are feed. And my son was actually in his bouncer. So my ten-year-old, nine-year-old cousin actually picked him up and then she dropped him. But it was by accident because she went to pick him up out of the um out of his little bouncer. So I dropped everything and I went to go grab him. I took him, I did the right thing and I took him to the hospital that night, that same night.
Hmm. In your statement, Shontay, you you say that you had a lot of the children there because um that was culturally your your responsibility to look after those kids.
Yeah.
While other people were away on sorry business and seeing the rest of the family.
Yeah.
And did you explain about that to the psychologist?
Um I explained everything to her, yeah.
Um do you think she understood what you were talking about there?
I thought she did at that time, yeah. Um but no, she didn't understand, yeah.
And one of the other things that you say in the parenting um capacity assessment you had to do was the psychologist had to watch you do a um an access visit with the children?
Yeah.
Uh now, was that when you had, when you could see the kids then, um was there any problem with you being able to do things with them?
I couldn't, my baby, he's like heavy. Um I couldn't really hold him because I had fractured ribs. So I was actually just sitting on the lounge and holding him and then she made a statement that I didn't want to hold him or something, is that? Yeah.
Yeah.
She made a bad judgment on just me not holding my son, like because I had fractured ribs.
This Mister Crowley, I'm sorry, I I'm reluctant to uh interrupt, but it might help if uh you could ascertain where the children were during this period.
Yes, yes, thank you, Chair. Um Shontay, so what you were describing there was a a visit that you could see the kids?
Yeah.
Who had the care of the kids at the time?
Oh, my mum's got the care of the kids. Our D C P, yeah.
Yeah, but they were they were placed with mum during this time?
Yeah.
Still there?
Yeah.
Now, you talked about the the psychologist doing the assessment.
Yeah.
Um later on, there was a a report that you found out about that the psychologist had done.
Yeah.
Now, after you did that that test and assessment with the psychologist, uh did she talk to you about the results of your tests or what she'd found?
No, she said that she was gonna give me a copy of my test results, but I've never seen her since or never even got a copy of my test results.
Uh you later came to know that um her assessment was that you you had low or poor intellectual functioning?
Yeah.
Uh had she spoken to you about that, told you about that when you did the testing?
She didn't even know, no.
Now, you got to see and or hear about other things that were in the report after it was done by the psychologist?
Yes.
And you you saw or heard that she'd said that you didn't really have any family support?
Yes.
And that upset you?
She stated that I didn't have, I don't have any real family.
And that upset you, Shontay?
That did.
And that that wasn't the case?
No, that wasn't the case.
And she also said some things about the relationship with with the children as well?
Yeah.
Now, one of the things that um she also talked about was that any any services that you might be able to receive, any services you might have, that your engagement with them would be superficial. Do you remember that?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh and that you you wouldn't be able to really take what you learnt there and and use it as a parent? Did you think that was was true?
No, I'm engaging with so many services at this moment right now, yeah.
In the assessment that was done, the report that was done by the the psychologist, um did you think that, did you think that she had really listened to you and taken into account the the domestic violence and the family loss at the time?
No, she didn't take anything into consideration what whatsoever.
What about your your cultural strengths and background?
No.
And what about your your actual physical health at the time? Do you think she took that into account?
No.
You say in your statement that it felt to you like everything was made about your low intellectual functioning?
Yes.
And a- as a result of that, um you understand that the the psychologist recommended to the department that uh the department should apply for for orders, long-term orders for the children to be in care until they're eighteen?
Yes.
Now, once you found out about the the report talking about you having low intellectual functioning?
Yeah.
You say in your statement that you were confused then about um whether you you had an intellectual disability or not?
Yeah.
Um she didn't say that you did, but the way it was described made you feel a bit uncertain about this?
Yes.
Now, after you'd done the parenting capacity assessment, you you met with the department and they they talked to you about um working towards reunification with the children?
Yes.
That was the first plan, they were going to work with you so that you could have the kids back?
Yeah, that's what they was planning to do, yeah.
And this was in in about early February of two thousand and twenty?
Yeah.
A little while after that, though, you had another, you had a meeting where you went to see your caseworker at the department?
Yeah.
Now, just tell us about that meeting, if you could, Shontay. Uh what was explained to you then?
When I went into the meeting, um I had a feeling, like I knew that it would be longer. I had a feeling about that, so he actually said to me, um we're going to go for a long-term order. And kids under the guardianship for eighteen years. And I was like, I was shocked, I said, wh- why, um why? And he, this is what he said, because you missed, there's a lot of appointments that you've missed and because I have an intellectual disability and low functioning issues.
Now, during that meeting, was there any talk about if you could have the kids back with support or
No.
with services?
No, so I I actually got angry with them and I walked out and I swore and I said I'll see you in court. That's what I did.
I should ask you, Shontay, when you went to that meeting, did you have anyone else with you?
No, no.
And you talked about then um walking out of the meeting.
Yeah.
Did you go back and see your see your lawyers then about what the department was now going to ask for?
She was shocked and she didn't believe it and then she found out, yes, they're going for a long-term order.
You had to end up going to court again?
Yeah.
Uh and that's still something that's going on now?
Yeah, and it's all became, it's all based on that psych report.
Well, I won't ask you anything more about what's going on at the moment with that, but I want to ask you more about then after you found out that the the department was going to make the um apply for the eighteen-year orders. Um the things that you did. So you you said that they didn't talk about any supports or services. What about the N D I S? Did they talk about you getting onto N D I S and getting some help?
No.
Uh you later did get in touch with N D I S?
Yeah.
How did that happen?
Well, I got on that pretty quick. My lawyer has actually um did another assessment, so um we actually went and did another assessment and I have found out I've got an intellectual disability, but it is mild. He also stated that I am capable to look after my children with support and offer me to get onto the N D I S, so now I am on N D I S now.
And so this was all arranged through your lawyers getting you in contact with another psychologist?
Yeah.
So when you saw him, he was able to do another assessment for you?
Yeah.
Uh what was different with this psychologist compared to the department psychologist that you'd seen?
The difference, this psychologist actually went through everything with me. Um cultural side, so he actually spoke a lot about my culture history. Um made him do a lot of stuff, actually, like did a lot of questionnaires and um, made him do a lot of stuff actually, like did a lot of questionnaires and testing. So, it was a lot more different than what I've, um, I've actually sat in there with him for three hours, um, to get that test done. The other side that I've actually had the test one, the test done was only thirty-five to forty-five minutes.
And you're a lot more comfortable with, with the psychologist you saw this time
Yeah.
to go through the testing?
Yeah, so I understood, yeah, I do have an intellectual disability, so now I can get help with that.
Yeah, so he, he told you after doing all the testing that uh, he confirmed for you, you do have a mild intellectual disability?
Yeah.
Um, but as you said before, he, he also explained that you can learn, you can parent your children.
Yeah.
Now, when you found out these things, how did you feel then?
I, I felt a bit more like understanding this guy actually offered me support. I felt more relieved, like, this is what I can do. This is what I can do to help, you know, for my children and to actually get offers, so I actually got into all that stuff, so.
Yeah, after you saw him, you said you were able to get, um, onto N D I S and, and get approved there for
Yeah.
um, plan with N D I S?
Yeah.
And you, you speak about in your statement as well about, um, some other things that you were able to um, get assistance with.
Yeah.
So, one of them, you say that you were able to see then a clinical psychologist for specialised therapy?
Yeah.
Now, how were you, how were you able to, uh, get access to the, the clinical psychologist, the new clinical psychologist?
Um, I actually got access with her through my lawyer, so, um, I see her once a month or once a couple of months. And that's been very helpful.
And you also say that you were able to get a, a mental health care plan done?
Yeah.
Um, how was that arranged?
That was arranged, um, through one of my doctors, so they arranged for the mental health care plan and got me through to the psychologist, um, from, um, special needs, like, um, what's it? Bowers Place, yeah. Yeah, so, um, they actually referred me and got me more sessions and stuff as well, so, yeah.
And you, you, you talked earlier on about doing the, the domestic violence counselling through AFS?
Yeah.
Um, i- is that something that you were able to, um, get help with through your lawyers as well?
Um, I actually called them myself. Yeah, and referred myself to them when, uh, my kids was actually first taken. So I tried to get all the support, um, you know, and they actually called me back and said that they would work with me and I've been having counselling every week. And have a worker come out and help me, so that's, yeah.
Now, all these things you've been talking about, Shontaya, did the department, did the department offer you any help to get in contact with these people or these services?
No, no.
Was this suggested it's something that you might do that might help you to parent?
Um, yeah, I just, I did it myself, looked up on the internet and, uh, read it on the internet and rang them and called them up, yeah.
What I was asking, Shontaya, was did the department suggest you need to do these things if you wanna show how you can be a parent to the kids?
No, they didn't suggest anything to me.
And one of the other things you've talked about in your statement is, is having a, an Aboriginal family support worker as well?
Yeah.
Um, can you just tell us about, about the support worker, how you got in contact with them and what they do?
Um, I got in contact with her through my lawyer, um, he had a bridge in all legal rights. And, um, she has also helped me, referred me to places and actually come out, um, even when I have meetings with D C P, she'll come and be beside me. So, um, she's like a very good support person.
Hmm, and was that something that the department offered or was able to arrange?
No, it was my lawyers that offered, offered that.
Now, I wanna ask you, Shontaya, about after you had put all these things in place and been doing these things, have you spoken to the department about, um, telling them the, the courses or the programs and the supports that you've got?
I have, um, spoken to them and I've handed them my certificates and told them what I was doing. I, so, yeah, I, um, have handed them certificates and stuff, so.
Now, when, when it was explained to you that the, the department was seeking the long-term guardianship orders because of your, your intellectual disability and how that affects your parenting, how did, how did that make you feel?
I felt lost, like, I, yeah, it was just one of those moments where I didn't know what to, what to do, I couldn't stop crying.
Now, you, you're saying, sorry, Shontaya?
Oh, that was really hard for me to even accept that.
Uh, you say in your statement that, um, you also felt like you were being discriminated against?
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Why do you say that?
Because she, the way how she stated that I don't have any real family, that was, and yeah.
Now, you're talking there about what the psychologist had said in the report about you, that's the psychologist who did the parenting capacity assessment?
Yeah.
Now, I was asking you a bit earlier about when you went and saw your caseworker and you told us you got upset when he explained that the department was gonna seek the eighteen-year orders?
Yeah.
Um, you later on had, had found out through your lawyers that the department had, had a meeting earlier in the year before you saw that caseworker, um, when they were talking about what the plan might be for you and the children?
Yeah.
So, you were telling us before that, first of all, it was working towards reunification?
Yeah.
And you were happy to do that?
Yeah, I signed papers for the reunification.
Then a couple of weeks, sorry, Shontaya.
I was thinking that I was gonna get my children, you know, returned back to me.
And then it was a couple of weeks after that that you went into the office and saw that your caseworker, he explained, no, we're going to look for the long-term orders?
Yeah.
Now, what I was asking you about is, you found out through your lawyers that the department had had a meeting in between those two things,
Yeah.
where the caseworker and the psychologist and uh, principal Aboriginal consultant were all involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, you weren't, you weren't at the meeting yourself.
No.
Um, but it's been explained to you that they had a meeting to decide what was gonna happen with your case and your children?
Yeah.
Now, with what's happened, Shontaya, do you think that you've, um, been given a, a fair go or a chance to show that you can be a parent?
No, I've never got a chance at all whatsoever.
If you were able to say to the commission here the sort of things that you think would be helpful, that could be done better to help parents in your situation, um, can you tell us about the sort of things that you, you think would make things better for, for someone?
Um, I think, like, the department needs to change the approach to parents with disabilities.
What, how would they change it to do what?
Um, you know, like, not make disability as the biggest, um, biggest threat for the kids.
You also have mentioned in your, in your statement that, um, you think that the department should immediately send parents and families on to, to specialist supports to help them.
Yeah.
If there's, if there's issues about disability.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing that you, you mentioned in particular is the N D I S.
Yeah.
Um, but also other, other specialist supports for, for people with disability.
Yeah.
Now, during the time that you were, um, before the, the court case started, were you offered any, any special support or any special programs for um, disability or, or intellectual, uh, functioning through the department?
No.
What about any, uh, cultural support from the department?
No.
Now, I mentioned earlier that you found out about a, a meeting where the, the principal Aboriginal consultant was there.
Yeah.
Um, did you have any, any contact with, with that person yourself?
Nah, no.
Or, or any Aboriginal person or First Nation worker from the department?
No.
Do you think those things might have been helpful?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have Aboriginal workers work with them, like, work with parents as well.
Hmm, you talk now about having the, the, um, the Aboriginal family support worker
Yeah.
that you can, you can go to. What sort of things do they do for you?
Um, they just help me refer me to places and stuff, whatever I need help with. And lot, like, just help me with a lot of support.
Yeah. In, in your statement, you, you say that you feel that the department should look at, um, the positives and strengths of parents and not just, um, the bad things or the deficits.
Yeah.
Um, what, the things that you're talking about as being positives and strengths, what sort of things are you talking about?
Um, like, um, so, so what do you mean by positive?
Yeah, so one of the things you talk about is, is how your culture is a strong part of who you are, for you and for the kids.
Yeah.
Is that the sort of thing that you're talking about the department should look at as well?
Yeah, the department should look a lot into the Aboriginal culture side and how it affects the family and stuff like that.
Hmm, now, you, you say that your, your culture, your aboriginality keeps you strong.
Yeah.
Um, and that, that helps you to stay strong for the children?
Yeah.
Um, that strength you're talking about through your culture, when you're describing that, are you describing, um, the strength you get from your family too?
Yeah, the strength and, you know, the struggle that I have got is because of, like, my mum. Basically, she's been raising my kids since I've been going through all of this. So, that's where most, that's how I keep strong, knowing that my children are actually with their grandpa, with their grandma, that's what keeps me strong.
With your mum, you described before about how your mum has the care of the children.
Yeah.
Um, do you get to see the children?
I get, I get to see my kids at excess three times a week, um, but they won't allow me to go to my mother's house or they won't even allow me to go, yeah, to go to my mum's at all.
Now, before this happened, how often would you see your mum go to her place?
Well, she actually lived out of Adelaide, so it was actually hard to see her because she was actually helping, um, my auntie. You know, who passed away, she was actually taking care of her and then it was hard for her because she had to take care of my children and she couldn't be there for her, so that was really upsetting.
And you find it hard now not being able to go and see mum?
Yeah.
Shontaya, I've just got one more thing I wanna ask you about. You, in your statement, you've, you've said that your, your disability is not your fault, you can't change it.
Yeah.
Um, and you, you describe that as being something you think is, is unfair?
Yeah.
Um, is that something that you, you feel in your case is how you describe as being discriminated because of your disability?
Yeah.
Thank you, Shontaya, that's all the questions I have for you. Just wait there for one minute, please.
Shontaya, I'm just going to ask the commissioners if they would like to ask you any questions. Just so you know, Commissioners Mason and Atkinson are in the Brisbane hearing room. Uh, they are together and Commissioner McKeown and I are in the Sydney hearing room. So I'll first ask Commissioner Mason if she has any questions she would like to ask.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, Shontaya, for, uh, giving your evidence today.
Yeah.
I really appreciate it. Um, I wanted to ask you a question about the supports you now have from L R, L A L R M, the, um, Aboriginal Family Support Service, from the Aboriginal Health Service and the Disability Rights Advocacy Service. Um, my question is, if you had that support right even before the department had become involved in your case,
Yeah.
just as one needing extra support in the community,
Yeah.
um, wh- what, what do you think would have been different about your life if, if those supports there were earlier?
Yeah, if there was, uh, if I had all, like, a lot of support in that earlier, I think it would have actually helped me a lot, um, and probably would have let me keep my ki- kids in my care still probably, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Atkinson, do you have any questions of Shontaya?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McKeown?
Uh, yeah, I have one question. Uh, thank you, uh, Shontaya. Shontaya, I know it is early, you've talked about your N D I S plan. What is your hope that your N D I S plan will do for, for you? Thank you.
Um, I hope that it will get me to where I would wanna be at in life and help me achieve what I need to achieve with my goals and stuff, especially for my children.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Shontaya, if you don't mind, I, I just wanna ask Mister Crowley something just before we finish.
Yeah.
Mister, Mister Crowley, this is a matter for you and there may be, uh, other ways of dealing with this. At the moment, I'm not very clear as to how the may, presumably there was some court proceeding. And presumably there was some kind of decision or agreement. And I'm not entirely clear whether Shontaya was legally represented at that point, at some stage, perhaps not today. It might be helpful just to have a little bit more information about that chronology. It might be helpful just to have a little bit more information about that chronology. It would be helpful to know what reasons were given by the department for such an order. And also further to the question of Shontaya, being able to visit the the children at her mother's home. It would be perhaps helpful if we had a little bit more information in due course about what reasons the department, might have given for such a decision. But I, can I leave that with you because I don't want to uh, uh, indicate how this might be done if at all, but that perhaps is something you just might take by way of notice.
Yes, Chair, and can I just clear one point up though? I- in Shontaya's case, we, the evidence that's been given is at the point where the matter has gone to court, and has not yet been decided. And that's why I I indicated earlier that we wouldn't go beyond, what's happened up until this point.
I'd rather read the ears, well, I'd rather read the statement slightly differently. Still bad, I'm sorry. All right, well, thank you very much. Shontaya, thank you very much for giving evidence. Um, uh, as uh other commissioners have said, we very much appreciate your coming to the commission. We know it's not easy and we can see that it's sometimes a little bit distressing to talk about your, experiences, but it's been of great assistance to the Royal Commission, and we value the story that you have told us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, do we take a break now? Uh, Mister Crowley?
Yes, if we could, Chair, please, till five past eleven Brisbane time.
All right, well, adjourn till uh eleven oh five Brisbane time, twelve oh five Sydney time. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.
Yes, Mister Crowley.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The the next witnesses that we have are a panel. Uh, we have Commissioner Natalie Lewis in person in the Brisbane Hearing Room, and Commissioner April Laurie to give evidence by the A B L link in South Australia.
Yes, we'll just wait, uh, for Commissioner Lewis and Commissioner Laurie to appear on the screen, which I hope will happen very shortly.
Chair, just while that's happening, if I might deal with the the statements. Oh, we have Commissioner Lewis now. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I thought momentarily we might have had uh both commissioners, but we seem only to have one.
We have Commissioner Lewis in person in the Hearing Room, and Commissioner Laurie on the video link.
All right, well, we'll assume that one way or another, everybody can hear everybody else. So, uh, Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Laurie, thank you very much for coming to give evidence to the Royal Commission. I shall ask Commissioner Atkinson's associate to uh, ad- administer the affirmation to each of you. Thank you.
I will read you both the affirmation. At the end, please both say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I think, uh, did we get both the commissioners to say I do or yes?
I do.
Yes, we have.
Very good, all right. Uh, Mister Crowley, after he deals with some formalities, we'll ask you some questions.
Yes, thank you, Chair. If I can deal first of all with the tender of the statements of the commissioners. Uh, firstly, Commissioner Lewis's statement is in the tender bundle C, tab eight. I tend to that, and if that might be marked, exhibit eight point one seven.
Yes, that can be done.
And the statement annexes are at tabs nine to fifteen, if they could be, tended and marked as exhibits eight point one seven point one to eight point one seven point seven, please.
Yes.
Then for Commissioner Laurie, the statement of Commissioner Laurie is in in part C of the tender bundle at tab sixteen. I tend to that statement if it might be marked exhibit eight point one eight.
Yes, that can be done.
And the annexes to Commissioner's statement are at tabs seventeen to twenty one. Uh, if they could be marked as exhibits eight point one, eight point one to eight point one, eight point five.
Yes, that too can be done.
And just to note, Chair, that one of the exhibits in, one of the next documents to Commissioner Laurie's statement is the subject of a non-publication direction which was made on the twenty third of November.
That will appear on the transcript.
Now firstly, if if I can ask Commissioner Lewis, who's present in the Hearing Room. Um, Commissioner Lewis, could you tell us first of all, you're a First Nations woman?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about your your background and about yourself.
Certainly, um, I'm a Kamalory woman, um, and while I moved um to Brisbane when um I was a small child, um, I've lived and and worked on younger and tourable country uh for most of my life. And so I pay my respects um to their elders, and both those of the past, um, of the present and those that will lead their people in the future. Um, I also just want to acknowledge First Nations children and families whose lived experiences give meaning to this work. Um, I'm the daughter of a Kamalory wom- woman who throughout her life contended with very real impacts of intergenerational trauma, who struggled privately with mental health issues without much support. Um, a woman who is characterized though in my eyes as a woman of strength and a woman who, above all else, knew how to care and protect her children. Um, we draw our strength from our matriarchal lineage of of Gomro Yena, um, who survived colonization, dispossession, and mission management. Their courage and resilience is sort of beyond imagination and it's um sort of what I try to live up to in the work that I do. Certainly, my apologies.
Thank you for that, Commissioner, and if you could, just slow down a little bit because we have to have the interpreters as well.
Of course.
Thank you for that. Now, Commissioner Laurie, can I ask you, please, um, you're a First Nations woman from South Australia, could you tell us a little bit about yourself and your background?
Yes, thank you, and respect and acknowledgements to traditional owners, First Nations people everywhere, and respect to Ghana, whose lands, which I live and work on here in the Greater Adelaide Plains, um, Murning and um Gugatha. I held from the far west coast region of South Australia, where my Murning traditional lands extend, across into Western Australia, which is essentially the Nullarbor um region and the Grand Australian Bay. And that's where my ancestral roots are deeply connected with, um, in that area particularly Yigla. And my Gugatha ties uh with the Gola ranges and lakes areas extending um to Aldia, just above the Nullarbor. However, my forebearers were forcibly settled at Koonaba Community, um, with the establishment, um, Lutheran Church Mission, approximately forty seven kilometers northwest of Seduna, which I call home. Um, I spent my formative years in Wayala. I'm of the Lorry mob from the Seduna Koonaba area. And part of a generation that felt the brunt of the last wave of government force removal policy. However, um, you know, I'm proud to say that we resisted and challenged that brunt and wanted to make things better, than what my mum and my grandparents, my great-grandparents, and ancestors experienced at the hands of settlers and government policy and practice. And I want to make a contribution, um, to stopping further stolen generations and keeping our Aboriginal children, connected to their families and culture, and to see the help that so many of our families need to keep them functioning and connected, to who they are as Aboriginal people. That's what motivates me to do what I do.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Laurie. Thank you both for those introductions. Can I come back then to Commissioner Lewis? Um, Commissioner Lewis, you're um currently one of the commissioners with the Queensland Family and Child Commission. Um, can you tell us, please, about the role that you you currently have and how long you've been in that role?
Yes, certainly. I commenced with the Queensland Family and Child Commission on the first of June this year. Um, our primary um role is oversight of the child protection system, um, to raise awareness, um, provide systemic advocacy, um, and accountability for the safety and wellbeing of children in Queensland. Uh, we do a particular monitoring, um, and oversight work that is focused on, um, the carmody recommendations from the Queensland Child Protection Commission of Inquiry. Um, but also, um, additional reviews of particular matters as referred by the minister.
And Commissioner, under the the um, the legislation for the commission, i- it's a requirement that one of the commissioners must be an Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander person.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's the role that you currently fill?
Yes.
Um, but you're the first commissioner, uh, First Nations commissioner to fulfill that role.
Um, no, actually, there've, um, there have been, um, two commissioners in in the role prior to me. Yes.
Now, can I ask you, Commissioner Laurie, um, if you could tell us, please, about your current position, um, and what your role is?
So my current role is Commissioner for Aboriginal Children and Young People. Um, I've been in the role since late two thousand and eighteen. Um, I guess my role, um, is to address at a systemic level, the issues that impact on the outcomes for Aboriginal children and young people across health, education, justice, and child protection. And that means examining policy and practice, um, that impact on our children and young people, and to engage and hear directly, from Aboriginal children and young people of their experiences, but also of their families and their communities as well.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Now, can I ask you, back to, um, Commissioner Lewis, um, you talked about in the role having an oversight of the child protection system. Um, could you just explain for the commission what it is that you you do in that function and how you go about fulfilling it?
Um, at the moment, um, we have a number of oversight, um, priorities. Um, while we continue to provide oversight of the implementation of the carmody reforms, um, and a number of other reforms, um, recommendations that have been made since, um, there are particular issues from time to time that we will, um, we will sort of build a program of oversight around to have a much clearer indication of a particular systemic issue. Um, so since joining, uh, the Q F C C, um, for me, um, one of the areas that we needed to improve upon significantly was in the oversight of, the overrepresentation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children in the child protection system. That's probably been one of the most compelling and compounding issues. Um, it's it's sadly become a feature of contemporary child protection systems across the country. And I think that the Q F C C is well placed to provide, um, true accountability, um, for the growing overrepresentation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children in child protection. Um, but also is well placed to provide guidance and, um, and advice in terms of, policy or or practice reforms that could, um, significantly impact on that rate of overrepresentation.
Yes, thank you. And Commissioner Laurie, can I ask you then, please, um, in terms of your role as Commissioner, um, what sort of functions and and powers that you have in fulfilling your position?
I don't have powers, um, as such, but I do have functions, um, which enable me to, um, interrogate and closely examine the, systemic issues that impact on the, um, child safety and wellbeing, and one has been a pronounced issue in South Australia and indeed, um, across every state and territory, and as, um, already alluded to, is the significant, overrepresentation of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander children in the care and protection system. And so when you look at this particular role that I, um, in as the Commissioner for Aboriginal Children and Young People, the origins of my role stem from, you know, the Aboriginal communities, um, lobbying over many years, um, in response to the history of removals of Aboriginal children from their families. And this role has, um, since its establishment, has an, has had an acute focus on particularly the child protection and youth justice system with regard to, um, adherence to the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander child placement principle and its application, um, to our children and families and ensuring that our children remain connected, with them, with family and community culture.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I I'm going to ask each of you in a little while some more about the, the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander child placement principle, um, both in the legislative framework, but also in its operation in practice. Um, but I want to ask first of all, uh, Commissioner Lewis, e- each of you have just spoken about overrepresentation of, uh, First Nations children in child protection systems throughout the country and in your own jurisdictions. Um, and you've mentioned about systemic issues being something that you are a concern to to examine. Could you tell us from from your perspective what the systemic issues are that you see that lead to that overrepresentation?
Um, well, it probably appears that I have a bit of an obsession with the child placement principle, but I think that when we talk about the systemic issues, um, the remedy, um, around particular, um, systemic issues like, um, an imbalance in in the level of investment in prevention and early intervention, or if we look at, the compromised participation of children and families in decisions about their lives. Um, they're all things that the child placement principle, in terms of the five constituent elements, are are intended to address. Um, we've certainly, um, um, there is, you know, been plenty of evidence before the commission with regard to the drivers, um, into of overrepresentation. Um, looking at, you know, disproportionate levels of disadvantage across a range of social indicators, um, experiences of poverty, intergenerational trauma. All of those things have a compounding impact, in particular when we're looking at, um, families, um, where a parent, one or or both parents, um, have a disability. Those impacts are compounded even further, so, you know, marginalized within the margins. So I think, um, you know, it's 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 pretty important, and I think it's it's disappointing that, um, we haven't paid significant attention to that cohort of families that are experiencing such extreme vulnerability, um, in the scope of work that we've done to date around the child, around the child protection system.
Mister Crowley, can I interrupt? I've just been passed a note by the interpreters. Uh, Commissioner Lewis, um, I really appreciate your passion, but I think it's causing you to speak a little bit too quickly for our Auslan interpreters.
My apologies.
So I could just encourage you, as was said before by the Chair, to slow down. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Laurie, can I can I go to you now and and ask you for your perspectives on the same, um, topic and the same issue of what you see as being those systemic issues that, result in the in the current overrepresentation of First Nations children in the child protection system?
Well, one of the obvious points is that the number of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander children in care, um, has been attributed actually to the increase in number of removals. But it's often been described as what I would say wrongfully about the lack of Aboriginal cares. But you have to look further to the fact that we have unprecedented levels of removals. Therefore, that equates to unprecedented levels of children, Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander children in care. We know that there isn't enough done in the early intervention and preventers, prevention work. We see the application of the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander child placement principle applied, at removal rather than systemically, and ensuring that we have its application, early on in the, you know, the child and family's contact with the system. We don't do enough. We don't do enough to refer our families and divert them away from the child protection system and connect them to early help services. Furthermore, we know that the workforce demography mostly of our child protection service systems is completely different to the demography of the Aboriginal community and the Aboriginal children and young people, which is there to serve the needs and interests of our Aboriginal children and young people. And furthermore, we know that this, you know, the child protection service system is so different and unlike the cultural makeup of our Aboriginal children and families, that there is bias against our families and our children. And essentially, what we have is a very foreign, you know, I guess, institution of child protection that is quite distant to the experience of Aboriginal children and families. And, you know, it has been alluded to, but we know that the research has established the link between higher levels of socio-economic disadvantage and the related problems with Aboriginal overrepresentation in the care and protection system. So, you know, we know the issues around the fact that we have many impoverished families that are, you know, having contact with the care and protection system. And what we need is more of the targeted and sustained early help services that can have the effect that we so desire to keep our children and families out of that system and to prevent that overrepresentation and turn that tide. And we can only then describe what that looks like when you have the, I guess, the double disadvantage in relation to the experience of disability. So there are those drivers that have impact on the overrepresentation of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander children in the system. And indeed, that includes the youth justice system.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis, can I ask you about the last points that were raised then by Commissioner Laurie? Amongst the factors which may contribute, how do you see the contribution to the overrepresentation if it is the case where a parent, a First Nation parent within the family has a disability?
Well, I think there are, I guess, a number of reasons why there is, you know, the potential for a sort of disproportionate impact. And I think that, you know, there's issues around equity of access to quality services. I think that there's a lack of appropriately skilled, culturally grounded assessment tools for people to make proper assessments of disability, but also of the most appropriate supports that can be wrapped around an individual or a family. And I think those two things, in the absence of those two things, using things like structured decision-making tools is most likely going to result in a finding that a child is at a heightened risk by virtue of a parent's capability to exercise, you know, their functions as a parent. I think that's, it's shameful in that if we have parents that are absolutely willing and remembering that willing and able is the criteria, when you have a family member or a parent who is absolutely willing but unable by virtue of not having equitable access to the supports that they need, I think that that's a travesty. And I think that that is the type of area that we need to focus on to ensure that there isn't a disproportionate adverse impact on parents with a disability in terms of their children being expedited to the child protection system.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Laurie, can I come back to you now? You were talking about, early, both of you spoke about early interventions as being a key aspect of what might address overrepresentation. From your perspective and in your experience, is there a concern amongst First Nations people about being involved with services and agencies that might be introduced in that early phase?
Well, from what I understand, as my work and role as a Commissioner and my own direct experience in that particular sector, our families fear the interventionist services and the so-called helping welfare agencies. And this stems from the experience of the protectionist area and what we know as paternalistic policy and those practices that have led to intergenerational trauma, which still holds strong and fortified, and is fortified in the memories of many of our Aboriginal people. So the consequence of this is ongoing, like the distrust of the child protection service system, which means that our families, you know, aren't willing to engage with early help support services for fear of attracting the attention of, you know, the child protection agencies and further entrenching the marginalisation and the disadvantage of our families. Notwithstanding, I've got to say this, that much of the early help services and child protection work is delivered largely by non-Aboriginal, you know, institutions. And we would have to argue, or I'd have to say, that they are not culturally at supporting our most vulnerable and particularly our vulnerable Aboriginal children and their families. And that just seems to be at the heart of it. And so once our Aboriginal children and families are having contact with the system, rather than being directed away from the acute response, our families, who are more than often our impoverished families with multi-dimensional, multifaceted, complex issues, will not be afforded the early help services. While there might be a level of distrust, those early help services need to be provided by Aboriginal community-controlled sectors so that our families have a high degree of confidence and are able to access services which they feel can meet their needs in a culturally appropriate way.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis, on that last point about access to services provided by Aboriginal community-controlled organisations, how important do you see that as being part of the solution for overrepresentation and interactions with child protection systems?
It's fundamental and it's probably one of the areas, I think, that is showing the most promise in terms of Queensland reforms. So in late 2017, we began a process of implementation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander family wellbeing services across the state of Queensland. There are 33 sites or services operated by 31 different Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community-controlled organisations. One of the very early, you know, signs through the data was that because the organisations were very clear in their separation from the Department of Child Safety as it was then, and were able to respond to the needs of families wherever the families found themselves on the continuum of need, and that, you know, they had taken the time to actually develop service models that responded to the needs of families and communities, not to respond to the demand or the needs of the child protection system or the types of services that they felt would be required. So an early indicator of success of those programmes is the high rate of self-referral. So in being non-stigmatising services, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people are more than willing and capable of accessing services they need at different points, whether it's of crisis or, you know, early identification of need. As long as the services that can respond to their needs and are delivered in a culturally safe way, as long as they are available, it's shown in the data that our families have no problem with help-seeking behaviour.
And if we were then to consider the parents, First Nations parents, who have a disability and are involved with the child protection system, what then is the importance of having the community-controlled organisations provide and deliver those supports and assessments and assistance for families?
Again, I think that's critical. The family wellbeing services can provide direct service or they can make referrals or bring other services to families. We know that there is, there are very few Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community-controlled specialist disability providers in the state. And I think that, you know, rather than use the excuse that they don't exist or that it's too difficult to build that type of sector to respond to the diverse needs of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, I think that a useful approach would be to look at the family wellbeing services across the state as a central infrastructure and start building specialisation of those services over time so that it can respond to the different and emerging needs in different community contexts across the state. So there's been some examples of, for example, oh, sorry, the specialisation in the space of domestic and family violence. So we had a number of parts of the state that did not have community-controlled services that specialised in domestic and family violence. So rather than try and build an extra system or sector to tack on, it was actually, the approach was to introduce that specialist skill set into the existing infrastructure of the family wellbeing services, where they're able to then extend the scope and scale of the services that they're able to provide to communities.
And just while we're talking about the family wellbeing services, in your statement, you've described how those services are often linked with an existing service like the Aboriginal Medical Service,
Yes.
which can then be a point, a known point for community where they can access those types of services as well as the existing services which they're familiar with.
Yeah, that's correct. The majority of those services across the state are attached to already existing, well-established, high-performing Aboriginal medical services. And it really gives us some insight into what optimal integration of social services looks like from a community-controlled perspective. And, you know, the range of services and supports becomes, that families need become possible in a real wraparound notion. I know that there's been a lot of talk about wraparound services, but when we look at particularly some of our Aboriginal medical services across the state and the scale and quality, oh, sorry, scope and quality of the services that they are able to provide to families, I think that, you know, we've really got a great model to, you know, to consider in terms of future reform.
Yeah, just in terms of the way you've spoken about the model, is it the case it's indications at the moment are positive for the family wellbeing service, but there hasn't yet been any formal evaluation?
So we've had data available for probably the last two years. A formal evaluation is about to commence with regard to that particular initiative. But the early data is certainly showing us that families that are referred to or are self-refering to family wellbeing services have a re-notification rate to the department, half of that of other families that have gone to other service types. So they're performing in that space around preventing entry to the child protection system at a rate twice that of other service types that are funded across the state.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Laurie, can I come back to you now to ask you to address the issue about the Aboriginal child placement principle, which you mentioned earlier and you talk about in your statement? First of all, can I ask you from a legislation point of view, what is the position in South Australia with respect to the enactment in legislation of the principle?
So the principle is currently in the child safety legislation of South Australia. However, we still have growing rates of Aboriginal children being removed and placed into care with people that aren't their family with non-Aboriginal care. So the point I want to highlight is that having the legislation, having the principle enshrined in legislation is important. But what is even more important is the adherence and compliance with the principle and ensuring that we hold the care and protection system to account in its application of the principle. And the principle is basically a recognition, and there's a hierarchy about how our children and the decision-making that needs to happen around placing children with family and with community. And so what it recognises is that Aboriginal people have the knowledge and the experience to make the best decisions concerning our children and the importance of, you know, each and every Aboriginal child staying connected to their family, their community and culture and indeed country.
In your statement, Commissioner, you speak about the five pillars of the principle. I wonder if you could just perhaps give us just an outline about what those pillars are and how you see they should be in practice put into effect?
Well, those five pillars, you know, are well established and they are partnership, participation, prevention, connection and placement. And what's really important about those five pillars is how they interact with the system and how they are aligned systemically to legislation, to policy, to process, to practice and programmes. So if you're looking at the five pillars and you're making decisions as a system about Aboriginal children and young people's care, then you would go to the placement principle enshrined in the legislation here in South Australia. That would be the case. However, we don't apply those pillars and its application systemically to considering early intervention and early help and prevention work with our families and our children. So that rather than applying the principle in the acute end when the department is moving towards a removal, actually afford the family the participation and management of that decision-making with regard to the safety and wellbeing of their children or their child and ensuring that we have, you know, maximum and optimal opportunity for Aboriginal community, our families' participation in the decision-making. So what we often hear, and what I've often heard, particularly in the, you know, extensive engagement that I've conducted over the last 12 months, particularly throughout 2019, is that our families aren't given or provided the opportunity to participate in decision-making or to be afforded the opportunity to engage in early help services. Once you have contact with the system, the system begets the system. So the outcomes are pretty much moving towards the adversarial end, which is removal. So there needs to be much more understanding about the application of the five pillars in concert with its application systemically across the system. And it isn't something that is just specifically, while it is prioritised in child protection and out-of-home care, I believe the principle can be applied equally so in service systems like education and in health so that we maintain and preserve the Aboriginal child with family, culture and identity.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis, can I ask you then about...
Just just before we leave, Commissioner Laurie, um you've said, I think, that the five pillars are enshrined in the legislation. Where are they enshrined in the legislation?
No, the Aboriginal in South Australia, the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle, as a principle of hierarchy of placement, is is enshrined in our SA legislation currently as it stands in section, section twelve.
No, it's not. It might be described as the principle. You you compare that with section five C of the Queensland Act, and I think you will note some fairly stark differences. All that section twelve does, it doesn't enshrine the five pillars at all. And all it does is to provide some principles that are to be applied once a child's removed. So I'm not quite sure how that can be described as the adoption of the five pillars.
Yep. And we are certainly advocating, and I've certainly been a strong advocate, for reforms in the legislation and and to look at best practice in um other jurisdictions with regard to legislation. And we know, we we certainly do look to the um the Queensland legislation as being an exemplar in that regard.
Very good.
Yeah, Commissioner Laurie, i- is it your evidence then that the way the South Australian legislation is is framed, it's really only um acknowledging the placement part of the five pillars in terms of the acknowledgement of the hierarchy of um where a First Nation child might be placed, but but ignores the other four pillars before it?
That's that's the fundamental issue. And whilst the service system is trying to um embellish those five pillars through training and development, um, I believe that those five elements need to be expressed in legislation, then to form itself into policy and then into practice. So we get much more robustness in adherence to the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle and how we want to enact that, enact that, sorry, um systemically and more broadly with regard to um frameworks, um practice regimes, um our funded programmes and how we certainly um develop policies and procedures and guidelines about the importance of the um of the five pillars and those elements that they're aligned to.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Now, if I can come back to you then, Mr Lewis, and and ask you then about the the Queensland legislation and the enactment of the the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle here. Uh, the Chair mentioned section five C.
That's correct.
Of our legislation.
Hmm.
Um, if you could just tell us then from your perspective how the legislative framework is set up to recognise those principles?
Um, certainly. Um, so I just I just want to mention first that in in terms of uh the Child Placement Principle, as it had become well-known in Australia and had been embedded in all jurisdictions um for a couple of decades now, um was unfortunately very one-dimensional. And what that led to in um over time in practice is we could observe then that that officers operating functions within the act were only compelled to think about an Aboriginal child's right to cultural continuity after they've already made a decision to remove that child. So when we started doing some work with Snake and and looked back over, you know, a whole range of, you know, uh pieces, advocacy from the ACHA movement, um, you know, staunch advocacy in the seventies and eighties, and even in the testimony of the Bringing Them Home Report, it became very clear that that original intent of the Child Placement Principle was far more than what it had become in a legislative um sense across Australia. So the work that we did was trying to recapture that intent and and reconceptualise the Child Placement Principle to give full effect to the idea that we should be trying to preserve um family structures. We should be trying to ensure that we are not asking children or expecting children to make concessions about their rights to connection, um because, um, you know, we were unable to, you know, partner properly with an Aboriginal organisation or or elicit the participation of their parents. And so when we started to look at the original intent, that's where those five constituent elements came from. So um that was actually agreed under the National Framework for Protecting Australia's Children. So it became agreed national policy under the Third Action Plan of the National Framework um and then continued um and was agreed by all Child and Family Services Ministers um into the fifth action, sorry, uh into the Final Action Plan, which also agreed to move towards implementation to the standard of active efforts. Um, that's a really, I think, important distinction because we can all cite examples of where legislation might look strong um on paper, but you find very little evidence of its application at on the ground level at that interface between children and families. So um some of the work that we did in Queensland um around firstly bringing each of the five elements into legislation under five C, as the Chair mentioned. Um, we also um took an approach to implementation that that acknowledged there is no point having strong legislation unless that intent can be safeguarded through the processes of policy development, of programme design, of the processes and administrative systems that operate in child protection, but also in the practice on the ground. So what the expectation is in Queensland for the legislation is that all five of those elements are given equal consideration and application across all significant decisions regarding Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children in Queensland. Um, when we look at the design of programmes, we actually can see in some of the uh, you know, statement of programme intent, for example, for family wellbeing. It actually is aligned to show how it gives practical effect to the to the areas of prevention, participation, partnership, um placement and connection. So I think what we've tried to do here is actually build all parts of the system to to as best we can safeguard that intent of the Child Placement Principle and to try and promote the safe care and connection of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children, regardless of the point on the continuum at which they come, so. Oh, they've gotten fast again, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I apologise.
If you could please, Commissioner, um, I just want to maybe have you explain something that come through your evidence just then. You talked about the work that we did and how you were involved in um having the 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 policy that was agreed, as I said, from a national perspective.
Hmm.
Um, before your current role.
Yes.
Um, you were involved in in this field as well in your previous life.
Yes, that's correct.
Can you just tell us what it was that you were previously involved in and how you were connected to that policy development?
Absolutely. Um, so I was the Chief Executive Officer of the Queensland Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Child Protection Peak um here in Queensland um for a period of eight years. Um, I finished up there in May, just prior to commencing at with the Commission. Um, during that time, I also served on the Board of Snake um and was the co-chair of the National Family Matters Campaign. Um, and so um effectively my advocacy functions across those three sort of quasi-roles. Um, we were able to influence different parts of the system. So um many of the um many of the solutions that are put forward by the Family Matters Campaign, for example, um stem from many, many, many years of advocacy from Snake. And so I think that we were able to connect the dots. We had three different points of influence um to try and drive reform that had been um advocated for a really long, long time. So um Quotset particularly in Queensland plays an important role. Um, they're a very uh respected, high-impact um peak body and um have been directly, hands-on, involved in the development of reforms since the Carmody Inquiry. Um, but more recently um in the development of the AWAY Strategy in the reform of legislation, um and also in the design and development of all of the um family wellbeing services, family participation programmes.
Yes, thank you.
Hmm.
Uh, Commissioner Laurie, um just going back to you, you mentioned earlier about um the the difference in the the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle from a legislative framework, and then you talked about um policy and then practice. Uh, I just wonder if you could perhaps turn to the policy and practice areas and if you could give us your perspective then from from how those the the principle and its five pillars uh are actually put into effect in your jurisdiction?
Well, one thing that's underpinning the, I guess, effective application of the the five pillars of the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle is the involvement and engagement of families. And but that's been the biggest complaint from our Aboriginal community is that they are marginalised, they are alienated from the very decision-making processes um that are garnered in the way the Child Protection System manages a, you know, a report, which ultimately um requires the involvement and engagement of families to be able to participate in decision-making. Well, what our families speak about is the fact that much of the decisions keep them outside of of those processes. And so what the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle um pillars um guide and direct are the practitioners into um a way in which to engage with Aboriginal workers, Aboriginal community, obviously the Aboriginal family, and to be able to connect to those services that can coordinate um the bringing together of Aboriginal families. But when you have a service system that is fearful and xenophobic towards Aboriginal people, like I said earlier, um, what we have to acknowledge in that address that besetting all of this is a workforce that is so culturally removed, distant to the demography and the cultural experience of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people here in South Australia. And this is probably an issue that um pervades every jurisdiction in this country. So far as to say that Aboriginal engagement in decision-making is very, very minimal and we need better ways in which we can access local-level Aboriginal family engagement in managing the decision-making. So we know that that's a gap. And in order to um galvanise the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Plac- Placement Principle, I've called for the establishment, oh, actually, the resurrection of what we used to have here in South Australia, but to improve on them, which is a call for local-level Aboriginal family care panels. Because we need to establish the link between the parents, the family, their child and their community and extended family um with the department's processes. So those Aboriginal family care panels should be present at the first point of contact between the department. Um, and when you hear from families and, you know, I hear of all the stories where things have gone terribly wrong and they are, they are many, um where they are the last to know of the removal and the report that has subjected their their, you know, their grandchild or their child to, you know, an investigation of of whatever um has been put before the department. So the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle needs to be applied in early intervention. So when a report of abuse and neglect or neglect is made to the department, the the application of the Child Placement Principle needs to be applied right through um prior to where there is a decision being arrived at for removal. Because what we don't have are the opportunities provided to the to the family to be diverted away. And we know that if we apply the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle um better and much more effectively in terms of early intervention focus, um, we wouldn't be netting to apply it exclusively in regard to a removal and placement. So that proper consideration needs to be given. And we know that we could have much more of a relationship of of the system with the Aboriginal community-controlled sector, uh notwithstanding more engagement with local-level Aboriginal family advice, um local-level Aboriginal family input, rather than the, you know, the contrary, which is happening now.
Now, can I ask you this, Commissioner Laurie? Uh, are you able to to comment upon how you would see the the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle um applying or intersecting with a a First Nations family where a parent has a disability? Is that something where the Placement Principle should still be um put into effect to support that family?
The principle has equal application to, you know, any Aboriginal family having contact and probably more compelling with the disability in terms of the double disadvantage that an Aboriginal person, an Aboriginal family with disability, because we know that the service system is quite harsh to our Aboriginal families and we know that disability is often seen as a risk factor in leading to removals rather than affording our Aboriginal families with a disability the opportunity to be engaged in early help services. So there is remedial support, there is capacity building in the family, there is direct linkages um to the much-needed services to support those families. And we know it's those families with disabilities that are the highly impoverished families. And the Aboriginal community is tired of poor families being harshly treated and penalised, poor families having children removed, the the acute-end um butting with our poor families as opposed to directing and providing equitable services to our needy families who need them, you know, who need them um desperately. So there's lots to be said about um the application of the um of the principle and its elements with regard to early intervention because I, you know, I firmly believe, and it's my, it's my firm belief that because of the system's inability to regard the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle in early help and early intervention work, that we are not safeguarding our families and our children in particular um away from the highly interventionist child protection um extreme result of removal. We are, we need to give and provide a just service system so that our families who need it the most are able to have family preserved and keep our children connected to family and community and culture.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis, can I pose the same question then to you? Uh, how do you see uh the the intersection or the connection between the the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle in the Queensland setting where we have First Nation parents with disability whose children are in contact with the system?
Um, certainly, I think, well, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Laurie. I mean, there's broad applicability in terms of those five uh five principles. And if we just think about prevention, what that means is about equitable access to quality targeted services that people need to be, you know, to keep their families safe. That is, that is what prevention means in the context of not just the Child Protection System, but youth justice or or any other social service um system that you can think of. Um, the the right to participation, which is, you know, the second element, is incredibly important. And it's where you see a really significant adverse impact for people with disabilities. Everybody has a right to participate in decisions that most profoundly affect their lives, regardless of ability. And I think that we've got an obligation to support that participation. Um, one of one of the means that we try to utilise in Queensland, um, you know, in the Child Protection System is the use of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander family-led decision-making, which is independent of the department, which is independently convened by an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander person from the community, you know, from which that family from the community, you know, from which that family comes. That's an incredibly important part of the reforms here. Because if we can't give effect to people's right to participate in their, in decisions about their lives, then how do we expect them to exercise agency over the care and protection of their children? So do you want me to keep going through the pillars or kind of get the, get the drift?
I want to come back to ask you something that you mentioned earlier and which you've talked about in your, in your statement. You've mentioned about the enactment in the legislation here of the principle and its five pillars. But you mentioned earlier that we really need to be looking at active efforts, how we can measure or determine active efforts. When you're, when you're speaking about active efforts, are you talking about looking at not just to see what the policy is or what the legislation is, but at the other end to see what is actually being done to put it into effect and how that can be measured or ascertained?
Certainly, with regard to my statement, the references to active efforts is, is about the need to introduce a standard, like set the bar, an expectation about what constitutes application of the participation element or the prevention element. There was a witness earlier in the week spoke about this sort of lazy process of sending an email like a, as if a referral in and of itself constitutes active effort in trying to get a support to a person who needs it. We have to go beyond those superficial efforts. And one of the risks we have in legislation is that people pay passive regard to those principles. And so what we're expecting through introduction of a standard is to provide a set of very clear practical examples as to what constitutes each of those five elements to the standard of an active effort in the context of child protection for Aboriginal children in Queensland. So I think that what's, what's really important, I would love to see that as a national standard. An active effort simply means that it is active, that it is timely, that it is thorough and that it is purposeful. And I think that that's a lot different than the sort of dismissive, you know, low-effort action around the Child Placement Principle that unfortunately we see in far too many parts of the state of Queensland.
And is there a current plan or policy with respect to developing active effort?
Certainly, I think there were a number of submissions made, probably about a year and a half ago. There were some proposed legislative amendments in Queensland. They haven't progressed as yet, but my understanding is that there was a high level of support for the introduction of, of the standard of active efforts into, into Queensland's legislation. But like I said, the, under the national framework, there was already a commitment from every Child and Family Minister from every jurisdiction in this country to pursue implementation of the Child Placement Principle to the standard of active efforts. But we see very little effort of, of, you know, pursuit of that standard.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Laurie, can I come then to another area that you've spoken about in your statement, which is the, the collection of data and information? And how important that may be? You've spoken in your statement about if, if data isn't recorded and collected for First Nations children in contact with the system, if it's not done in a more than rudimentary way, that, that, that's a failing in the system in being able to determine what support might be needed and what responses might be needed. Yeah, sorry, Commissioner, if you could just please, if you could comment upon that.
Well, yes, so we know that in South Australia, we don't have good data on the extent of our, you know, our families, our parents with a disability in contact with the child protection system. That is, that is, that's, that's fact. We know that our systems don't really reveal, in terms of the data, the, like the complex issues that our, that our, that our First Nations families, including those with disability, can experience when in contact with the child protection system. Well, I guess my experience in that I just want to highlight is that there's no way from the data to clearly discern the types of disabilities children and families are experiencing. And we know, as I said earlier, that the data is formed around, that's framed around disability, is around disability as a risk factor, as a factor in, you know, allegations of neglect or emotional abuse. And so for me, that raises, you know, questions about remedial services and the extent of early intervention supports that are accessible to families. The data leakage is across a number of South Australian agencies, whether they be health-related, justice, education is also, in my view, very poor. So overall, the way, the way in which we collect data in relation to disabilities and the nature and extent across child protection and across the Aboriginal community as part of that is, is lacking and needs greater development. So the, the data collection plays a key role in ensuring that child protection staff are best placed to recognise and appropriately consider indicators of disabilities and the socio-economic disadvantage. So it's important for First Nations parents with a disability that we have the data collection. We can interrogate service system and service design. And we know that we can better plan for early intervention services, prevention services, be much more responsive to their needs and albeit provide those much-needed wraparound services so that we reach that goal where removal is not the last resort. So of particular importance is the potential for data to track the types of service delivery being provided and whether they are being provided in a culturally appropriate way. And like I keep on referring to, are they being provided through an Aboriginal community-controlled organisation or similar? And importantly, whether any decisions are being made in partnership with the family and with the community in line with the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle. Furthermore, we know that the data collection would contribute to and obviously inform government expenditure and, and certainly policy development and develop those mechanisms that can better identify and respond to the trends of disproportionate representation of our Aboriginal families and young people with a disability in the child protection system. And, you know, that could actually drive, you know, a focus, we, we could drive that focus in in-home community care and early intervention methods of service delivery and intervention. So that data collection is, is critical. And it's, it's important that we have a better understanding of the nature and extent of this across our Aboriginal families and our children. And that qualitative evidence is, is, is going to be also equally important. Because we know that when you look at South Australia, we've got, you know, quite geographical remote areas. And when you have limited support services available, that can lead to increased risk for our Aboriginal families coming in contact with the child protection system. So we need, we need that data so we can better respond to our, our Aboriginal families with disabilities.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis, on that same subject matter, are you able to tell us about what your understanding is about the, the data that may or may not be available for First Nations families in contact with child protection system where the parents have a disability?
I'm unaware of any available data in Queensland that would, that would, you know, give us some indication of that. And, and that clearly is problematic. It means that we don't know what demand looks like. We don't then know how to respond to it. And I think that, that's, you know, it's, it's an area of data development that is sort of long overdue. I think just, just on the point of data as well, I think we really need to focus on moving towards outcomes-based data. I know that, you know, at a national level, there's always disagreement about, you know, things being too hard or being incompatible with the systems that they're using to capture data. But I think that those excuses of inaction don't hold up anymore. We've got plenty of information that tells us about the performance of systems. We know how many, we know what the capability is of each jurisdiction's, you know, child protection system to remove children. We know how many, you know, how many children are notified, substantiated, we've got all of that information, but nothing to tell us how safe and well are those children? We, we, we've got an obligation, you know, particularly in the statutory child protection system, that when a child is deemed unsafe and requires removal from their home, we have to be able to provide better. And while there is no data that can confirm that that's the case, I think that, you know, it's sadly lacking. We, we absolutely need to be able to provide that information. And until we start measuring what matters and focusing on real outcomes in the lives of real children and families with a disability or without a disability, we absolutely have an obligation to do better by those children. And we, we should be able to publicly report on our performance in that space.
Commissioner Lewis, talking about data, can you help me, please?
I'll try.
Queensland's Child Protection Reform Programme 2014-2024 reports that between 2012-2013 to 2016-2017, there were increases in the number of children in out-of-home care of 96. But the increases for First Nations children, A, subject to intervention with parental agreement, that was up 23.7% over that period, and 14.9% increase of children subject to a child protection. What's happened between 2016-2017 and 2019-20 in Queensland?
Witness those documents?
Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
Yes, Chair, we're just, just providing the, the document to the witness so that she could have it in front of her.
And why are you thinking about that? Something else I'd like, which we might have explored yesterday. The Australian Institute of Health and Welfare reports in its latest report that although there seem to have been falls in the number of children being placed in out-of-home care, much of that is due to a change in definition of what constitutes out-of-home care. And it apparently is the case that New South Wales and Western Australia changed their definition to include, to exclude children on third-party parental responsibility orders. Yesterday, we were told that the number, that the proportion of, sorry, the number of out-of-home care orders in New South Wales had decreased by 33%. But when one looks at the figures in the AIHW report at page 61 and thereabouts, we see that much of that may be, subject to clarification, due to a definitional change. So my question to you, in addition to what's happened to the figures, is has Queensland changed its definition and thereby attained an apparent improvement?
Okay, so I might work from the second question backwards. Yes, there's certain, there certainly was a change in definition. If, if you have a look at the Family Matters Report for this year, what we were able to identify is that by virtue of that definitional change, 2,100 approximately Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children became invisible in that, in the set of data that you're referencing under the AIHW. So for the purposes of the Family Matters Report, we have included those children because regardless of the, what you call the order, they are still children in out-of-home care. And there is still an obligation, and I think that was important, an important position for Family Matters to take, to make sure that those children were not made invisible and would be considered in the context of, of reform discussions and, and what needed to happen going forward. So the definitional change did apply to all jurisdictions. In Queensland, permanent care orders would be those most likely to be impacted by that definitional change. So that was only introduced, I think, I think it was three years ago. And the rate of use of permanent care orders meant there was not a significant change after the, you know, after the change in accounting rules for out-of-home care in the AIHW data, if that makes sense. Whereas for New South Wales and WA it was.
It may make sense if my understanding is correct. My understanding of what you were saying is that the definitional change, unless modified, rendered certain categories of children who were in fact part of the system invisible because they weren't regarded as part of the new narrower definition. But in Queensland, you have taken those invisible children into account. And when you take them into account, between 2017, let us say, and 2020, there's been no particular reduction in numbers. Is that what I'm telling you?
Yeah, that we haven't, we certainly haven't seen, you know, a significant, or we've seen mild increases. One point of, of interest in.
I just want to be clear, have I understood what you're saying correctly? Okay. That would mean that in order to get a meaningful picture of the position in each Australian jurisdiction, we need to understand over time the impact of this definitional change to make sure it's not just an accounting exercise.
Absolutely.
I think we might have, okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Laurie, I want to come back to you now and ask you about another area that you've referred to in your statement, which is on the, the issue of decision-making by, by child safety workers? And how you see issues with respect to that in practice? You've, in your statement, referred to hearing of some concern in practices about how decisions are made by, by individual staff and officers in cases, despite the fact that there are extensive policies by the department about how they should conduct their assessments and go about their decision-making. Just explain for us what you're referring to there.
So if, if you take a look at what's been the case over the last 10 to 15 years here in South Australia, there has been a decrease in the number of Aboriginal children who are being cared for by members of their extended family, their Aboriginal families. So that, that for me tells a story that the decision-making has more than likely not involved the Aboriginal family. So I'm aware that from my role, even as Commissioner for Aboriginal children and young people here in South Australia, that I've heard directly from mothers who've had their, you know, their babies removed from, from birthing units, from health services, antenatal services. And the parents were never provided any supports for addressing the reasons of the vulnerability of their infant child. And, you know, as we know, the outcome that the, the placement was the inevitable, the removal and the placement was the inevitable outcome. And so when you look at the decision-making processes that happen, I hear all the time from families that they are more than often the last to know and excluded from critical decision-making points in the decision-making process. So the fact is, is that when you have a service system that is fearful of engaging Aboriginal families and say that there are no families or the, and families are unwilling to engage with their services. with their services, it goes back to the heart of family led decision making in, in acting initiatives such as the Aboriginal Family Care Panels with family group conferencing so that we put the family in the early intervention sphere with the family and the child and the community at the centre of the decision making early in the piece, rather than when removal is the inevitable decision by the authorities or by the department. And so what I've seen is that if you actually, you know, articulate the five pillars of the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle systemically and look at partnership participation and connection in the early, you know, early on upstream, when there is the initial contact and the opportunity afforded to the family to bring family together, to have family engagement and to lead the decision making, then that just puts a whole different context into the outcome for the Aboriginal fa, um, family and their child. So what I'm, what I'm, what's really concerning is I'm continuing to observe the practices of excluding and alienating families from the decisions despite there being very detailed and extensive policies and procedures developed by the Child Protection Agency, you know, and they certainly outline to the staff how they should conduct assessments and make decisions about possible child removal. But what we have is, you know, lingering decision making that also, you know, alienates the Aboriginal family. And what I would say when I hear directly from families and their experience is that staff that are overly judgmental, that are highly judgmental in terms of Aboriginity and their own discriminatory attitudes and beliefs, but also overly judgmental about anyone that might be presenting with disabilities, practice being risk adverse and acting in ways which assess safety without proper consideration of family and culture, both of which are not mutually exclusive from safety. So it's, you know, it's difficult to understand how all the policies and procedures developed by the, um, by the institution of child protection, how they operate. And I know that there's a manual practice and that there's an assessment framework and there's structured decision making tools, but in my experience, experience, it's been difficult to access all those relevant policies and understand how they operate in practice. But what I do see and observe and what I do hear when I hear complaints from, from families who are distressed about the, the, the very harsh way in which the organisation has left them out of the decision making system, which could have been prevented, which could have had our families early on and being able to access those much needed services within our Aboriginal community controlled sector, more importantly. So the, the, you know, the current practices and attitudes of practitioners, they exclude and they alienate our families. Decisions in my view are continuing to be made without the informed discussion of, um, with family. And child removals occur very quickly with little or, or no family involvement in planning and decision making. So, you know, I'm putting it out there again, we need mechanisms on the ground at the local level where you've got Aboriginal family engagement, you've got Aboriginal family care panels that need to be resourced, supported and established where it can provide that and address the gap that currently exists and the burgeoning gap where families are not engaged, where in, in times and moments where they most greatly need to be. Yeah, I, I guess.
Sorry, Commissioner Laurie, I just wanted to ask you about this when you're on this topic, you, you have spoken already about the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle and its five pillars. In your jurisdiction, there's also the Disability Inclusion Act, which has a similar type of statement of objective or principles about early intervention and support for people with disability. In the context of child protection, workers performing their roles, are you able to comment about how those principles are seen and, and put into practice for First Nations families, particularly parents?
Well, I, I do know the Disability Inclusion Act does outline principles supporting both early intervention and supports for people with disability. In practice, I've also observed that the involvement of the, you know, child protection agencies lead to removals, I know, I know that. But what is the case is that there's not too much regard with, with the, with the principles that underpin the Disability Inclusion Act around early intervention, there is no regard for the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principle. So you need both of those being integrated and applied in a way that can safeguard the elements of the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle for the benefit of the Aboriginal child and family. So, yeah, I don't know whether you want much more from me in regards to that, but the principle is there, but I don't see too much happening where there is that high degree of integration and accountability with how you observe and put into practice the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle with the Disability Inclusion Act.
Yes, thank you Commissioner. And can I just touch upon something in your statement, which you've referred to, about the issues you've been talking about from child safety workers? You've made the observation that lack of understanding of culture and of disability by those, those practitioners or workers, the logical consequence then is to use safety to justify removal. Is that how you see it?
That is often, that is often the, um, the case and the outcome. So that the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle, particularly in regards to that fifth element where it's exclusively around the placement aspect, is that safety is, safety is seen exclusively as safety when safety should, should have regard for the child's Aboriginity, the child's identity, the child's connection to family and community. Because what, what I know, and I, and I've heard this directly from children and families in our community, is that all those things that are really important to the rights of a child and the rights to an Aboriginal child is family. The child, the Aboriginal child has a right to family. And so that the importance of the application of the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle is fundamental to ensuring that we keep our Aboriginal children safe, because we're not talking about abandoning safety, we're talking about how safety interacts for our Aboriginal children and young people with the aspect of, of family and culture, community identity, that in order to thrive, our children need to be safe and safe and connected with a great sense of belonging and attachment to culture and family. And what often is the case is that we don't see that as the outcome. And there is nothing that stops, that is stopping child safety staff from thinking more holistically, holistically about their decision making and the methods for how they could manage a child, one Aboriginal child's safety and wellbeing. And, you know, that could be something really simple, is just picking up the phone and ringing and making contact with the immediate family, you know, and looking at options to support the parents and reaching out to an Aboriginal consultant, a principal Aboriginal consultant who's already there in the system and look at and, and examine culturally informed ways. But what our families say is that far too often Aboriginal workers are used in replacement of the family to give advice about what is best for the family. And so decision making, once again, is structured in a way and is played out in a way that, once again, alienates the voice of the Aboriginal family with regard to their child. So, you know.
Sorry Commissioner, I'm sorry Commissioner, we're just going to run short of time here and I just wanted to give the opportunity to Commissioner Lewis to, to pick up about something you've touched upon in the decision making, and particularly the structured decision making you've referred to from the department. So I'm sorry to, to interrupt you in your answer, but Commissioner Lewis, you have referred the Commission to a, a graph, a table document that you yourself have prepared? And you wanted to take the Commission to it to demonstrate or to explain something about some of the matters that Commissioner Laurie's been talking about?
Yes.
Could we please have brought up, the document ID is DRC 0011.007.001? And Commissioner Lewis, can I, can I just tell you, we're, we are running short on time?
Yes.
So could you please just tell us what this document is?
Yes. So what we've done is mapped the substantiation rates for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children that, across a 20 year period. What we've plotted at different points along here are the most significant child protection reforms in Queensland. What I find interesting and which probably raised my concerns with regard to the, the cultural efficacy of the structured decision making tools, particularly the family risk evaluation, which was mentioned in evidence in the last couple of days, is that if you look across the, the graph and you look at a point in time at which structured decision making tools were introduced, so in 2005 was where the agreement was made to introduce those, if you look at the rate of disproportionality in terms of the rate of substantiations for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children in Queensland, I, I, I find it difficult as much as I reflect back over the history of reform to find any other, other reform that has had such a dramatic disproportionate impact on the rate of overrepresentation. So if we, if, if you look at the year of 2005 to 2006, from that period of 2.3, that means that an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander child in the child protection system in Queensland was 2.3 times more likely than other children to be substantiated. After introduction of those tools, you see a fairly sharp increase and a continuing increase to the point of where Aboriginal children in 2017 and 18 were 7.5 times more likely to have been substantiated as being at risk of or having experienced harm than other children in Queensland. The point at which you start to see it go down is where we see the introduction of the legislative reforms, which included the introduction of the five elements of the Child Placement Principle, the introduction of the independent entity and the rollout of family wellbeing services and the, and the family participation programme in the state of Queensland. So I thought it's probably an easier way to sort of summarise the impact of tools that are not culturally safe.
And, and could we conclude from what you've demonstrated there in the graph and the, the line going up, the introduction of those structured decision making tools has worked to a disadvantage to First Nations families and children because of the way the tools are themselves constructed?
Yes, I think there was, you know, a lot of discussion, I probably don't need to go back over the particulars of that, but certainly Tracy Westerman, when she talked about the importance of culturally, culturally grounded and, and locally informed assessment tools, the importance of that, it's not just about the cultural capability of the person who is administering those tools. We often just default to this position where we have to build the cultural capability of the actors within the system, as if there's this mystical journey that we can send people on through training where they somehow land comfortably in culture. And for me, the best demonstration of cultural capability is when somebody knows, is self-aware enough to know that it is not their right nor their place to make a particular decision. And I think that what we are starting to see in the reforms in Queensland is that we need to stop thinking we can import cultural capability into a system that is largely incongruent with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, our way of, our way of being and our worldview. I think what we need to start looking at is the opportunity to transition power from the system into our services so that we can actually take responsibility for the decisions that most profoundly impact upon our children.
Yes, thank you Commissioner. Chair, I, I note the time and that's all the questions that I want to ask the Commissioners. I'm not sure whether Commissioners have questions, but, or whether any of the parties who may wish to ask for leave to ask questions wish to do that.
Let me first ask if Commissioners have any questions, Commissioner Mason?
Hi Commissioner Lewis, so just looking at the graph, what, wanted to just get clarification. So prior to 2005 and working backwards to 1999, those were the years of the Aboriginal childcare agencies, which were community controlled.
Yep.
Organisations, each, in each of the jurisdictions that took the lead in supporting families and children.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkinson?
Chair, I did write down a number of areas I want to ask about. That graph has blown everything out of the water. I might think about, perhaps we can put some of those questions in writing, because I think, having seen that, it really puts a different complexion on everything we've seen, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKeown?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but just to expand on what I think Commissioner Lewis said, and so it's perhaps Mr Crowley might be noted, the Family Matters Report 2020, at page 56, explains that the out of home care counting rules changed for all states and territories from 2018 and 2019. It goes on to say that that makes the children removed from families, affect, some of them effectively invisible, and it recommends that there be a reversal of that approach to the counting of out of home care. In order to address the issue concerning New South Wales, yesterday we were taken to a document, which I will hold up, but that document is DRC 0011.0006.001. That was the one that showed the number of children and young people who entered out of home care by Aboriginity in New South Wales. If you look at a footnote, you'll see that the data for 2015, 16 and 2016, 17 have been recalculated using the new counting rules that came into effect. So it may be that that 33 or whatever percentage it was reduction is comparing apples with apples, except that in order to get a full picture, we need to understand how many indigenous children and for that matter, non-indigenous children have, were the subject of third party parental responsibility orders. I'm not sure yesterday we got the full picture. In other words, there may be nothing of substance that changes, but we do need to understand how it works and I'm indebted to Commissioner Lewis for explaining all of that. Commissioner.
Chair, I just had a couple of areas if I might ask very briefly Commissioner Lewis about. Thank you. Commissioner Lewis, there was some comment made in earlier evidence, not today, about whether there was a Human Rights Act oversight in relation to child protection matters. Now, obviously Queensland, it's only been in operation this year. Are you able to comment whereas if it's part of your role or part of any strategic plan to have that Human Rights Act? to have that Human Rights Act overview or embedded in terms of particularly child protection issues?
Yes, so the QFCC last week released our new strategic plan. In it, we've been very clear about repositioning the organisation to have an explicit focus on implementation of the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child. So in a sense, around the acuity or the extra attention that we can pay across a range of systems, particularly focused on the individual rights of children, we hope that that will be, you know, that will sort of, I guess, augment application of the Human Rights Act. I think it's just very important because as the commission exists, we don't need, we need to not only focus on the child protection system, we keep looking there and re-examining everything, hoping that we're going to find solutions, when actually what we need is a mandate that is absolutely child rights-based and that gives us scope to look at those other systems where children experience inequity and where through proper advocacy and accountability of those systems, that we can have an impact on the rate of entry to the child protection system.
Thank you. The second area I just wanted to take you to, you mentioned earlier domestic and family violence. Now, you'd be well aware of the Queensland Task Force report, Not Now, Not Ever?
Absolutely, yes.
And you're aware that there were some specific recommendations directed towards Indigenous, if I can just use that word now, Indigenous communities. And recommendation, for instance, nine particularly looked at wraparound services in communities addressing domestic and family violence. Now, if I can just move on from that, in terms of your graph, you are aware in terms of implementation, are you not, because you attended in fact meetings of the Implementation Council?
Yes.
As a result of that task force? And you're also aware of significant legislative reform in the area of domestic and family violence since that time?
Yes.
Now, in terms of your graph and perhaps in terms of any reduction, do you think that, and why do you think, the introduction and particularly looking at wraparound services, for instance, is so important in terms of child protection issues, just in relation to that for a start?
So, say, I was a member of the Domestic and Family Violence Implementation Council. I haven't been for probably at least a year and a half, two years, so I might be rusty on the details, but in the first sort of implementation of those reforms, it became clear that there needed to be tailored and more dedicated approaches to address the rates of disproportionality in the experience of family violence for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander women and children. And where I think we have started to see some success in terms of access parity to services is where we have focused on embedding specialist domestic and family violence supports or close commercial relationships between providers of specialist domestic and family violence supports, Aboriginal medical services and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander family wellbeing services that operate across the continuum of the child protection system.
My last question to you is this, is that clearly in terms of disability, you take it in that broader sense, I think, don't you, including psychosocial?
Yes.
Issues. Clearly, domestic violence, you'd agree, affects disability issues with children in terms of psychosocial issues that they're exposed to, correct?
Yes.
And also women, particularly in terms of issues which would then render them in terms of disabilities such as acquired brain injuries and those sorts of issues. Would you agree?
In some circumstances, yes.
Yes, all right, thank you. I've got nothing to add.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr Crowley, anything arising out of that?
No, thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. In that case, thank you Commissioners Laurie and Lewis for your evidence and for your detailed statements. Your evidence has been very useful to the Royal Commission. Thank you very much for your appearance. Mr Crowley, should we now adjourn and if so, until when?
Yes, could we adjourn now Commissioner, but could we resume as close as possible to what would be the scheduled start time of 1:35 Brisbane time? There's quite a bit to get to this afternoon and I'm just concerned to make sure we stay on schedule then, even though I haven't here.
Yes, well, we need to stay on schedule because we'll need to finish by 4:35. There are some commitments at this end that have to be honoured that take place very shortly after 4:35. So we shall resume then at 1:35 Brisbane time, 2:35 Sydney time and even Melbourne time. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Ms Bennet.
Chair, I understand that the next two witnesses will be giving evidence as a panel. They are Ms Taylor and Ms Boswell. I'm not sure if they're available online.
We'll wait for them to come up on screen, which we hope will happen very shortly. Sorry, is there a problem?
They're in the room, ready to go.
Yes, I think we've got the witnesses on screen. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms Taylor. Thank you, Ms Boswell. If you wouldn't mind following the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate, who will administer either the oath or the affirmation, as the case may be, to you. Thank you.
Ms Taylor, I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And Ms Boswell, I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Now, Ms Bennet will ask you some questions. Just so you're aware, Ms Bennet is in Melbourne, Commissioners Mason and Atkinson are in our Brisbane hearing room, Commissioner McEwan and I are in our Sydney premises and you are somewhere else.
Adelaide.
Adelaide.
I knew that, I just wanted to see if you knew. All right, yes, Ms Bennet.
Thank you Chair. Ms Taylor, you've made a statement of 68 pages dated 22 October 2020, is that right?
That's correct.
And are the contents of that statement true and correct?
They are.
Commissioners, you'll find that statement in tender bundle part D at tab 80. I'd seek to tender that statement into evidence and ask that it be marked as exhibit 8.19. The annexes referred to are numbered, I seek to have admitted as exhibits numbered 81 to 160, sorry, eight.
Eight point one nine.
Eight point nine one, yes, I'm sorry Chair. Eight point nineteen point one to eight point nineteen point eight three.
Yes, the statement and the exhibits will be marked in that way.
Thank you Chair. Ms Boswell, you've made a statement dated 22 October 2020 of 16 pages, is that right?
Yes, it is.
And are the contents of that statement true and correct?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Ms Boswell's evidence is at tab 165 of part D of the tender bundle Chair, and I ask that it be marked as exhibit 8.20.
Yes, that can be done.
Please Chair, thank you. Now, Ms Taylor, I just wanted to start with your statement at paragraph 16. You refer in that paragraph to the long-lasting impact of past policies on the First Nations community. Can you tell this commission what policies you are referring to?
So I'm making reference to a series of policies. I'm reflecting the history of child protection practice and legislation that really accounts for the best part of the last 150 to 200 years.
And are those policies which actively sought the removal of First Nations children from their families, is that what that's a reference to?
It's a series of different policies. They will have been everything in terms of, as you'll recall, history. I'm not an anthropologist, but I can certainly recall from memory that it'll pick up everything from assimilation practices through to native persons and yes, it picks up a lot of those historical policies.
And in your view, when did those policies that you're referring to, when were they removed from South Australia?
So I think rather than when they were removed, what I would say is that I think the enshrining of the Aboriginal child placement principle, first in practice, subsequently in regulations and more recently in legislation, has really brought to the fore the approach that we want to take in relation to child protection practice with Aboriginal childrens and families and communities.
And are some of the impacts of those past policies, do they include overrepresentation in the child protection system?
Overrepresentation occurs for a variety of reasons. It's certainly fair to say that intergenerational trauma that has been experienced by Aboriginal families and communities contributes to that, but in fact, our information and our data that we've been lucky enough to have in South Australia, and we share with the Northern Territory a quite unique data mine that we can access, which is the SANT data link. And what that actually shows for us is that the major reasons that are contributing to overrepresentation is firstly, obviously, the number of reports that we receive for Aboriginal families. So the greatest level of overrepresentation we see is at the point of the matters being reported and then by the time we actually get to notifications being screened in and then investigations and lastly, children being removed, we start to see a narrowing and the level of overrepresentation is still more than is reflective of the population. But what it reflects is the complexity of the experiences that Aboriginal families are experiencing today. And particularly what we see is the impacts of domestic and family violence, the impacts of parental substance abuse and mental health amongst probably the three most significant issues. But also I'd add things such as housing stress, employment, access to good primary health.
I'm going to take you through the steps of that child protection system in a moment, but is another cause of overrepresentation in your view, the concept of unconscious bias that we've been discussing over the last few days?
Actually, I would say unconscious bias is an issue that we all confront in every workplace across the nation. Interestingly, South Australia, the Department of Child Protection, the majority of our practitioners are social workers, so there's no question we have to pay really significant attention to unconscious bias. We're also conscious it manifests itself in lots of different ways. It might be biased in relation to race, culture, gender, age, it might also disability, I was going to say, you know, absolutely. So we have to pay particular regard to that. As to whether it contributes to overrepresentation, I couldn't comment. What I can say is it's one we very pay attention to and in fact, it was as the result of a review that Queensland undertook in a case that we took the opportunity to take a step back and look at, how do we actually continue to provide training to our staff about unconscious bias? How do you actually remedy that? And training alone isn't the answer, it's why the importance of good reflective supervision, case consultation, because what you're looking for is multiple perspectives rather than just one view. But you're right, it remains a work in progress.
Now, as I understand the material that you've put before the Royal Commission, and perhaps the witness could be shown sag dot zero 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 one dot zero 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 two dot one four four two. As I understand it, this is a, I'll just wait for that to come up a moment. This is an annual report for your department and we've opened it to a page showing the rates of First Nations children in out-of-home care. Is it fair to say that the number of First Nations children in out-of-home care have increased between 2018 and 19 by 12.3%?
I'm just going to ask at our end if we can blow it up. Distance is my challenge.
Sorry, so it's the box at the extreme right, performance comparison.
There we go.
And now, I'm sorry, it's actually the next page along, one four four three. And that box there, thank you. The number of Aboriginal children in out-of-home care increased by 12.3% from 2018. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yes. And then, as I understand it, presently, First Nations children, and this is returning to page one four four two, if the operator would be so kind, First Nations children comprise 34.2% of the out-of-home care population, which is a slight increase from 2018 and that's the second box, sorry, the first box on that page.
That's correct.
Yes. Now, earlier today?
Sorry, could you? What is the definition of out-of-home care that was being used? Is it the one that was amended in about 2017, 18 or is it the earlier one or both?
So Commissioner, if I might, I might explain that in fact, a number of years ago, we discovered that every jurisdiction had a slightly different counting rule in relation to out-of-home care. So for jurisdictions, and this was less of an issue for South Australia, but for a number of jurisdictions where they might make a long-term order to another person or a permanent care order, for example, if I was thinking about Victoria, they weren't necessarily in the count of out-of-home care. So what the report on government services now does is it uses the same definition for all the jurisdictions, but we've also asked it to also include, as you have referred to, the old definition, because it's helpful to understand, we don't want anyone to be invisible to those receiving support. So when we talk about children and young people in out-of-home care, in the South Australian context, we're talking about children and young people who are under the custody or guardianship of the chief executive in South Australia, this is obviously provided for under our legislation, and they will be placed either in family-based care, which we would often see as with kinship or with foster carers, and a small percentage are placed in non-family-based care such as residential care or supported independent living.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Now, Ms Taylor, earlier today, Commissioner Laurie described unprecedented levels of removal. Do you agree with that assessment?
Unfortunately, I didn't see the evidence that Commissioner Laurie provided, but I would certainly say that we're not seeing unprecedented levels of removal. Yes, we are seeing growth in out-of-home care, but there are three factors that contribute to that. One is about entrance into out-of-home care, the second is about the aging population and the length of time children and young people are spending in out-of-home care, and the third thing that contributes to those numbers is the numbers of reunification. So in relation to Commissioner Laurie, what I would say is that we are seeing So in relation to Commissioner Laurie, what I would say is that we are seeing growth in our out of home care numbers, but we're not seeing levels of unprecedented removal.
Are the levels of increase concerning you?
I'm always concerned when we have to remove a child or young person from their family. But I'm really reminded of the legislative framework and the statutory framework under which we operate. In South Australia, our legislation, we got new legislation that commenced in 2018. And this came on the back of the Nylde and Royal Commission. And it really put front and centre the critical need to focus on the safety of children and young people. And so I think it's fair to say that's the paramount principle under which we operate in the current environment. There are amendments currently before the House that the Minister introduced two weeks ago, which will also introduce the concept of best interest. And I'm also delighted to say also expand the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle to pick up the five domains that you'll see reflected in the Queensland legislation, for example. So I think it's fair to say.
Miss Taylor, I'm going to interrupt you there because I've received a note to ask you to please slow down your speech to assist the interpreters.
I'm happy to do that.
We're going to cover a fair bit of ground and I'm not going to prevent you from talking about the issues that I'd like to elaborate on. But I'd just like to understand for a moment if the concept of safety, as your department understands it, if that encompasses a concept of cultural safety.
What I would say to you is we have really clear legislative frame. And certainly, we obviously intervene in the lives of children and young people and their families where there's concerns or risks identified. Now, obviously, when we're making an assessment and we're looking at the whole question of safety, we will definitely look at the questions around cultural safety. That will certainly form part of our assessment. But we have to always secure safety as per the legislation as our primary, you know, approach.
Yes, now, I'd like to step back and understand a little bit about the division of responsibilities between your department and Miss Boswell's department. So as I understand it, Miss Taylor, you're the Chief Executive of what is a relatively new department for child protection, is that right?
Yes, we were established on the 1st of November 2016, so we're just four years old. And we were formed in the aftermath and in response to the Nylde and Royal Commission that requested that it be very much focused on the statutory framework.
And Miss Boswell, you work in the Department of Human Services. Can you tell the commissioners your role in that department?
I'm the Chief Executive of that department.
Yes. Now, as I understand it, DHS is the department that has responsibility for early intervention, the identification of supports for children and young people who might require them, for example, by reason of disability, is that right?
Yes, for early intervention in the child protection system. And we have had that responsibility since the 1st of July last year.
And so how does your department receive, I guess, notification that it needs to provide that early intervention support?
So part of the purpose of the system being transferred to us is that we're undertaking a major reform of the early intervention system. That reform is also on the back of the Nylde and Royal Commission. And so therefore.
So my question is about children. How do children get referred to you? How do they come into your system?
And I'm saying that the system is in reform at the moment. And so therefore, there is a changing practice associated with how they are referred. We are.
As at today?
Yes.
Sorry, as at today, how would that happen?
As at today, they can be referred either by the child, depending on what part of the system they're referred into, either by the Department of Child Protection or by various health services or by education system or by other NGO services. So they can actually be referred in in a number of ways.
Now, your department is not concerned with the removal of children into out of home care, is that right?
No, but we work very closely with the Department of Child Protection to try to sustain families and allow children to remain safely and culturally within their family systems.
And when it appears that that may not be possible, is it the case that the responsibility for that family transfers to the Child Protection Department that, Miss Taylor, you are a part of?
Yes, it is because the legislation and the statutory provisions sit with Miss Taylor.
Yes. I was just going to take the opportunity to just tease that out a little bit more. So for example, Lois's services may be working with the family. They start to get very concerned about the risks that they're seeing. We might see, you know, a referral back into us. Now, we may work with them about how do we best wrap around additional supports around a family. But if we don't believe that that can be sustained, then we may have to undertake an investigation. And, you know, obviously as a last resort, seek to remove a child or young person from that environment.
Yep, I understand. So is there one agency, though, that has a clear line of responsibility in relation to that child at any one point in time? Given that you work together, are we able to identify as at any moment which department is responsible for that child?
Yes, in that there is responsibility for the child in the service with which that child has been referred. However, there is statutory provisions that kick in at certain periods of time. And at that time, then there may be intervention by the child protection system. Our service has no powers of investigation or of particular orders that sit with the Department of Child Protection.
So I think.
I was just going to say. Sorry, go on.
I was just going to say, the easiest way to look at it, and I know it was one of the attachments to my statement, is we have a framework in South Australia called Safe and Well. And in a way, the most simple way to describe it is the responsibility for supporting families is led by the Department of Human Services. And the responsibility for protecting children is, the lead for that sits with the Department for Child Protection.
Yes, and so we've had some discussion this week around primary supports and secondary and tertiary interventions. Have you heard any of that evidence?
I've heard of it. I haven't obviously listened to all of it this week. I'm well acquainted with a number of the experts who gave advice.
Yes. So would it be accurate to say, Miss Boswell, that your department is concerned more with the primary functions and, Miss Taylor, yours with the more tertiary? And there's a spectrum in between?
No, I don't think that's correct. And the reason that I don't think that's correct is that part of the reform that we're trying to undertake with the system at the moment is to target resources to families with greater complexity. So we clearly do have universal and primary services. And they sit with many of our government departments. So their education and health have universal and primary services. We are moving our resources and moving the way that we respond to families to try to respond to those families with the greatest and the most complex needs. Because it's become clear that the lack of targeting of supports has not been serving people well. So there is different debate about the categorization of primary and secondary and tertiary. It would be fair to say that Department of Child Protection sits probably at the tertiary end.
We'd agree.
But I would say that we are moving to try to sit more in the secondary place because we think that that is actually an evidence based approach to intervening with families.
Yes, thank you. So is it the case that at the point that a child transfers from primary responsibility sitting with DHS to child protection, does the orientation of the attitude to that child shift from secondary to tertiary?
No. And what I was probably going to say to you is, rather than conceiving of child protection as a linear process, I'd be more inclined to say to you, see it more as a Venn diagram with some overlap between our respective departments, particularly in the tertiary environment. We're very clear who's got the lead. But obviously, we work hand in glove to ensure that we wrap around the practical supports that are required for families. But when there's no alternative, we will have to undertake, you know, as per our statutory framework, what we need to do.
But there is a point in time where the Department of Child Protection will take over primary responsibility for a child or family. And at that point, questions of additional interventions or removal become available. I'm not saying they'll be used, but that's at the point at which they become available, is that right?
No, I wouldn't conceive it as become available. Because in fact, we may have the lead on this with a child. But in fact, the way in which the family is getting the support, even after we've taken the lead, may be delivered, for example, through a child wellbeing practitioner who are funded and supported through the Department for Human Services in our schools. So really, what I'd probably suggest is Department for Child Protection, lead, as I said, for child protection. But in fact, how we discharge that, we'll often be working with DHS and the funded providers to actually give effect to that.
But only your department can make an application to remove a child?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, so when a child moves to your department, that intervention is available and it is not before that transfer takes place?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'd like to just understand a little bit more about interaction with clients. Do you refer to the children you work with as clients or?
Which, are you directing it to myself or Lois in the first instance?
Or either. How do you refer to the children you work with?
I'm probably more inclined to refer to them as children and young people in the care. And before that, obviously, children, young people and families that we work with. Clients is always hard because it's probably an easy go to. But I'm not sure that they always see themselves as necessarily a willing participant in that process.
Well, we might return to that concept. I wanted to take you to the Disability Access Inclusion Plan that I think, Miss Taylor, you are next to your statement. It's at sag dot zero 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 one dot zero 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 two, just take it out, dot one five four two. Now, as I understand it from that document, 25 to 30% of the children and young people, and it's at page one five four four, the third paragraph from the top. So that's 25 to 30% of children and young people in care have a disability or developmental delay. Is that right?
That's correct.
So is it fair that a high number of people that interact with the child protection system in South Australia have a disability or developmental delay? That's a reasonably high proportion, isn't it?
It's certainly higher than the population in terms of, I think, and Lois would be able to correct this. But I think in terms of the population, the percentage in the population sits at about 7% from recollection. And for really significant disability, it sits at about 4%. But what I would certainly say is, yes, what we see is children, young people, they do represent, you know, as you say there, you know, just over a quarter of all of those children, young people in out of home care.
And are you able to assist the commission in understanding what proportion of First Nations children in your system have a disability?
In terms of, probably the best proxy measure that I could refer to is we have NDIS plans for children, young people in out of home care. At the moment, we're sitting at about 946 NDIS plans for some, you know, 4,400 children, young people in out of home care. What we know is about 35% of those NDIS plans are for Aboriginal children. So about 330. Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm asked to ask you to slow down again. For the interpreters. I'm very keen and I'm sure the commissioners are keen to hear your evidence. And I'm keen to take you through it, but we might need to do it more slowly. Are you able to tell the commissioners, I might ask if that graphic be taken down. Are you able to tell the commissioners what proportion of adults that interact with your department have a disability? So parents or carers?
No, I'm not.
I noted from your statement at paragraph 45 that you don't have a uniform definition of disability. Are you able to explain why there's no uniform definition?
I think what I would actually say is that we follow the definition of disability that's reflected in the NDIS, the National Disability Insurance Scheme Act. What the challenge is for us is that, and I think it's reflected in the statement, we record that information for parents, often in case notes. And so it's not easily extractable to be able to give you the numbers.
In your statement, you say that you don't prescribe the use of specific definitions for disability, but that you would seek to record information, including intellectual impairment, autism, physical disability, hearing and vision impairment and acquired brain injury that have been diagnosed by other agencies or professionals. Does that cluster of disabilities reflect the NDIS definition? Why have you chosen those as what you expect to be reported?
The NDIS obviously also pick up children. And obviously, that will pick up particularly for those zero to six. That'll be the additional category of developmental delay that obviously also plays out for children there. What we were really trying to illuminate in that part of the statement is that we capture the information about parents in a variety of ways. We capture the information about children. One of the things I am pleased to flag for you is that the Federal Royal Commission into Child Sexual Abuses in Institutional Responses identified that it was an area that needed further work. And so there's national work being undertaken to settle that definition and how it's captured.
Okay, well.
Miss Bennett, I have a question for Miss Taylor. Can we just go back two steps back? When you were being asked about the percentage of children and young people, you say about 25 to 30%, as we saw in the document. You then said that the total, the population sits at about 7% from recollection. 7% of what population? Can you just clarify, what did you mean by the percentage in the population sits at 7%? And for really significant disability, it sits at 4%? I really want to understand and get a full picture of what did you mean by those numbers? Thank you.
I was referring to the population in South Australia as a whole, not to a distinction between child protection and adults, but actually the population as a whole.
Okay, so I would need to really clarify. You're saying that the population in South Australia, of that population, 7% have a disability?
If I can provide further detail, but I understand in the Australian Children's Report, there's some of the data that's actually referred to for the population.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit lost here. I'm just trying to get an understanding. When you say 7%, you mean 7% of the population in South Australia have a disability, regardless of child or adult? I would appreciate clarity.
Certainly, Commissioner, and my apologies if I'm not being clear. What I was really trying to say is, when we're talking about children and young people in South Australia, so I am talking about children, what I was trying to not do was focus on out of home care. For the child population in South Australia, my recollection is that the indicators are approximately 7% of the children's population identifies having a disability.
Okay, are you able to point to a data reference for that? And then I'll stop there, so thank you.
I'll certainly get the reference for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. While we're discussing disability. While we're discussing disability among children in your system, do you record data in relation to fetal alcohol spectrum disorder?
We record information about fetal alcohol syndrome disorder, obviously, in our case notes, but in terms of being able to easily extract numbers, that's not available to us at the current time.
Is there a requirement for a formal diagnosis of that condition, or is that informally identified? Are you able to tell us that?
No, I'm not. Obviously, as you'll appreciate, one of the challenges very early on is when children and young people come to our attention, what we are getting referred to as areas where there are concerns about abuse and neglect, and obviously, we're seeing trauma play out. What we often need to do is then actually get specific assessments undertaken so that we actually understand what might be attributable to disability as opposed to trauma. And obviously, there's a significant amount of overlap there, but it's certainly the case that it's not easy to diagnose fetal alcohol syndrome disorder in a baby. You know, it's certainly recognised that we need to capture that information, and we think that's an area that we need to do more work in.
So what's the distinction you draw between trauma and disability?
Well, obviously, we've talked about the definition of disability. Obviously, with trauma, we're looking at the impact of children and young people having experienced abuse and neglect and the harm that they've experienced as a response to that.
I'd like to, while we're talking about the proportion of children with a disability, I'd like to ask you a few questions about the proportions of your workforce. Could I take the witness to table one of Ms Taylor's statement, which is at stat zero one nine four dot zero 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 one dot zero zero three one, which is page thirty-one of your statement? And there's table one there. As I understand it, this tells us about the training available by your department between March 2018 and March 2020, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, as I understand it, up to thirty percent of the children that you work with, the children and young people that you work with, have a disability. Is that right?
That's correct.
And a proportion of the adults you work with will have a disability, but we're not sure of that proportion, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, I can see on this list one training course that relates to people with a disability. It's the seventh box down. It's working with children and young people with an intellectual or developmental disability. So it's a subset of children or young people with disability for which you offer training, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, that's a non-mandatory training requirement?
That's correct.
And as I understand this data, seventy-seven out of two thousand and ten officers have attended that training in the period.
That's right. In terms of that data, as you'll appreciate, it's not cumulative data, it is simply that proportion of the workforce who've attended training during that period of time.
Yes, but, yes, so about, by my maths, about three percent of your workforce have attended training on some, in this disability module?
During that twelve-month period. Well, two-year period.
Yes, that twenty-four-month period.
Yeah.
Is that a high enough proportion, given the number of children and young people you're working with with disability?
We've tried to take a two-pronged approach in relation to working with children and young people with a disability. As you'll be aware from my statement, we've particularly established a specialist section of staff. It is now totaling some thirty staff with expertise specifically in disability and developmental disability. These staff obviously support regional service delivery staff. What we're now doing, and we've been delivering it through this month of November, has then been delivering learning sessions to all of our service delivery staff through our regions. So as I said, it's a two-pronged approach. A core team of some thirty staff who hold significant expertise in disability, and then ensuring that we roll out ongoing learning and development to all our staff, so they actually have a very strong working knowledge of working with children, young people with a disability.
So is the answer to my question that you consider this level of training to be adequate?
No, what I would say is that I consider it a work in progress, and that we'll continue to invest in core expertise as well as augment learning to all of our staff.
Right, so you'd agree with me that this needs some work?
I'd agree with you that it's a work in progress.
And are there any other training modules that you offer in relation to children, young people with a disability that is not listed here?
Yes, so that was only the training that was delivered in that two-year period. As I flagged, during the entire month of November, we've been rolling out a series of learning sessions to all of our staff, working both with parents and also with children with disability.
Now, as I understand the situation, at the moment, your statement at paragraph forty-six tells us that you are not presently capturing data about the operation of the Aboriginal Placement Principles, is that right?
I'm going to have to check that because I'm not sure that's what it's meant to say. I can certainly talk to our level of compliance with the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle.
Well, as I understand paragraph forty-six, it says that at a national level, the department is a member of an organisation, and that work is underway, and that it's improving, and very other matters.
Yeah, no, we absolutely capture already our level of compliance with the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle. All jurisdictions around the country do. What we have been doing is working with Snake, and I think you're hearing from Richard Weston later in the week, to actually enhance that level of compliance. The other thing I would point you to, which really shows how every jurisdiction is performing in relation to that, is I'd refer you to the Family Matters Report, which was only released last week, and it actually looks at the level of compliance, every jurisdiction, how we're travelling against the four building blocks, and in particular, the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle. So I can say to you, as at the end of September just passed, a level of compliance is at approximately sixty-four point three percent.
Across all, across which measures?
In compliance with the placement hierarchy that's reflected in the legislation.
And I think we've established that at present, the legislation does not reflect all of the Aboriginal Child Placement Principles, is that right?
Yes, I think, I know you heard from Commissioner Laurie earlier, I don't know if she mentioned it, because she's been part of the Expert Advisory Group, who's been working with us together with Commissioner Lewis, but our minister tabled in the South Australian Parliament two weeks ago amendments to the legislation to actually take on board all five domains of the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle, and actually went further.
So my question is, at the moment, have you been tracking the five principles? Or is it?
So I was going to say to you, in terms of the five principles, yes, we capture that, so we know how we're tracking against that in terms of, if you look at our Aboriginal Action Plan, we've absolutely focused that in paying attention to the five domains. We didn't wait for their legislative amendments, we felt it was important, we've had our staff trained by Snake about the criticality of those five domains, but ultimately, we'd like to see them reflected in legislation, and that's currently before the House.
And so do you consider that your department's compliance is at an acceptable level at the moment?
Oh, I'd always say that I'd like to do better in relation to the level of compliance with the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle, and that's why all of the jurisdictions, as is reflected in my statement, are working together with Snake, because we believe there is more to do.
Yes, Commissioner Lewis, I think, gave some evidence that the principles generally attract passive regard rather than active steps that can be easily measured. Would you agree with that?
Yes, and that's actually some of the very helpful feedback that Commissioner Lewis provided to South Australia. So we've taken the opportunity in our amendments that are before the House to actually go further than Queensland and to reflect and include in the amendments the need for active efforts. So we're trying to actually take the best of Queensland and actually become nation-leading in relation to the implementation of the five domains of the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle.
And what are the safeguards you have in place to ensure that they are complied with?
So we've got a number of safeguards, probably starting in no particular order. We report to Family Matters on a national basis, we're part of that group, we're keen to also see the alignment with the Closing the Gap targets, we report at a state level, and you reflected that in our annual report, in terms of how we're travelling. But really, for us, the big safeguards are about our practice. How do we actually embed and sustain what is reflected in our legislation and in our policies in our practice? And so we undertake regular annual reviews where we have children and young people participate, and that includes Aboriginal children, young people, we have carers participate. So at every step, what we're really trying to see is, are we actually paying attention to the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle? As I said, we've come some ways, we still have further to go.
Can you, I'm sorry, I wonder if you could explain what difference it's going to make to include the specific reference to Child Placement Principle in the legislation, which in fact is the Children and Young People Safety Bracket Miscellaneous Closed Bracket Amendment Bill 2020. It's a little curious, in a way, that you've applied the Child Placement Principle, you say, but it wasn't actually in the Act. So how were you able to apply the Child Placement Principle that wasn't in the Act but is going to be in the Act if the amending bill is passed?
So in terms of the way in which the South Australian legislation is framed, the part they refer to, Commissioner, as the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle, is quite rightly, as you say, really only about the placement hierarchy. We've taken a view that we actually need to pay attention to all five domains, that's why.
I understand you've said that, I'm just wondering how that is compatible with the existing structure of the Act, which provides in section seven that the predominant principle is harm to the, or risk of harm to the child.
Yes, so the way in which that's going to be changed, Commissioner, is at the moment, you'll see that the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle in section twelve follows the general placement principle. The amendments actually propose to move it forward and actually bring it up alongside, as you say.
I do understand that, I've got the material in front of me. My question is how you were able, you say, to apply the Child Placement Principle, all five elements thereof, under the existing legislation, which simply doesn't refer to them in those terms?
Commissioner, I'm not sure that I'm understanding the point. As I said, our view is we want to bring all five in, we don't believe it should be only seen as a placement hierarchy, we think.
You can take it, I follow that, thank you very much. Just not, what I don't follow is how it was consistent with the Act. But anyway, no doubt someone from South Australia in due course will explain.
May I ask a question since we're, we have a little break? I wanted to ask you about evidence we've heard from more than one witness about the unintended adverse consequence of the use of the last of the placement principles only at the point of forcible removal, which leads to the fracturing of a family when the child is placed with a relative of the mother in particular, and the access of the mother is required to be limited so that she loses the support of her wider family. Have you given any thought to the way in which you can avoid what I presume is an unintended adverse consequence?
Commissioner, it's definitely an ongoing challenge, and, you know, it's similar to the challenges we see in family law, where it's absolutely critical, we really want to see children, if they can't stay with their own family, you know, placed with extended family, but you're quite right, and there can be issues where it then means that one of the parties may lose the support of the broader family. So it's one of the reasons why we've started a trial earlier this year in family group conferencing, because we think that only doing it at the point of placement is a challenge, that in fact, we need to engage all family much earlier in the process, and you will have heard about family-led decision-making and family group conferencing, and for us, that's one of our opportunities, we think, is to actually involve all family earlier in the processes, to actually focus on how will they best support those needs for children and young people who've either have suffered harm or at risk of harm without further fracturing the family. Because we certainly recognise that children, you know, do their best when they are placed with family and extended family.
So you say it's a trial, what kind of trial is it?
It's a trial in that the government funded us for non-government, one of our non-government services, Relationships Australia, South Australia, to do a trial for a time-limited period. It's now reflected in our legislation, but we will be seeking to expand that. So it's a trial in terms of how many families they'll be able to work with during that eighteen-month period.
So how many families have they worked with? I would like you to be more specific than just general by saying there's a trial.
It's a trial, that's the language that we're using here, because obviously, it's the first time we've funded it. I've got some updated data in terms of that, and if you bear with me for half a minute, I will be able to pull up the number of families. So as at Wednesday, the twenty-third of November, the family group conferencing have worked with approximately fifty-eight families in total, and of those, twenty-six of those families were Aboriginal, and that involves some one hundred and sixteen children. And obviously, that's also been during the period of COVID, so as you can see, it is early days.
Thank you.
Now, Ms Taylor, you tell us in your Manual of Practice that reasonable steps must be taken to consult with an Aboriginal organisation that is, in the opinion of the coordinator, appropriate to the child or young person, or a member of the ATSI community to which the person belongs. Now, that's in the Manual of Practice, the Case Planning Chapter at sag zero 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 one dot zero 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 two dot zero six six nine. I wanted to understand briefly, is it the case that it is not compulsory for that consultation to take place? Or is it compulsory for that consultation to take place?
So there are two elements that I want to pick up on. The legislation obviously prescribes where we need to consult about placement, and it obviously picks up the requirement about where the Manual of Practice takes it further. It actually provides much more guidance about doing it in a timely way. So in terms of being mandatory, it's absolutely our view that, yes, we do need our staff to consult with, it might be the gazetted organisation, or it might be another suitable community member or elder, or someone from their family or clan group, and it needs to be done in a timely way. So we certainly, in terms of placement, are looking for that to be done within twenty-four hours.
Just to pause there, just to step back, as a matter of case planning, so at each decision point for your intervention. As a matter of case planning, so at each decision point for your intervention, is it mandatory to consult with such an organisation?
As I said, the legislation prescribes that we've got an obligation to consult around the placement decision. What we take the opportunity is, and this is what the Manual of Practice takes it further, is that we actually believe we do our best work when we actively consult with, from a cultural perspective, at key decision points. So think about it in terms of good case consultation.
Yes, so Ms. Taylor, can I just summarise, as I understand it? At the point of placement decision, it is mandatory under the legislation, is that right?
It's certainly required under the legislation.
Yes, so the answer to that question is yes. And then at every other decision point, it is your preference that it occur, is that right?
It's more than a preference, and this is what the Manual of Practice goes to. This is absolutely what we know to be best practice and what we require and our staff to engage in. As I said in my statement, the Manual of Practice was introduced last December and obviously is being rolled out and reviewed. And we're going to keep taking the opportunity to check that it's being embedded in practice.
So the answer is yes, it is mandatory at each decision point for your officers to attempt to consult with an Aboriginal organisation?
Or it might be a principal Aboriginal consultant. It might be a member of a local community member. It might be others involved in the child or young person's life. I just wouldn't want you to narrow it to a specific agency or setting.
Well, my question was directed to a specific agency. And so I think the answer to that is it's not mandatory to direct your inquiries to that particular agency. I understand that, but that might be one. The other options appear to be other community members. Are they First Nations people that are being consulted with?
They would be.
Are they required to be?
So as I said, the only absolutely mandatory requirement we have at the moment is in the legislation. What the Manual of Practice absolutely signals to our people is the critical need to engage and to have all of those cultural discussions as we're doing good case planning, good case formulation, as I said, good case consultation.
Is it fair for me, is it fair for the commissioners to understand that it is mandatory in the case of placement decisions and preferred in other decisions?
You can use the word preferred. I'd probably say it is absolutely recommended.
Yes, recommended. Yes, okay, thank you.
Sorry, can I ask this? You've said that there is something in the legislation which requires consultation to take place. Can you help us by telling us what that provision is?
I certainly can. In terms of, there's probably two areas that I'd refer you to, Commissioner. In terms of Section 12 of our Children and Young People Safety Act, if I refer to, obviously, the application of the Aboriginal Child Placement Principle to 123c, we obviously have the requirement there to, before placing a child, to where reasonably practical consult with a recognised organisation. I'd also pick up in 12, Section 8, in terms of what a recognised organisation is. And you'll see there they particularly turn to, in relation to the placement of an Aboriginal child or young person. And so it actually makes reference there specifically to us declaring by notice in the Gazette, which we've done.
Well, thank you very much, that's helpful. There is no comparable provision for consultation in relation to any other children or young person. In other words, it's confined to what the Act describes as Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander child or young person.
Yeah, you're right, it only references at the moment placement. And I guess that's why with Ms. Bennet, I was just trying to tease out. We believe from a practice perspective that, in fact, it is absolutely recommended that we critically consult at key points along decision-making pathways.
Thank you.
And do you record, Ms. Taylor, when that does not occur?
What we do record is obviously our rationale for decision making.
I'm just going to ask you to just, first of all, I think it would be easier if you answer my question first, and then we'll go to the next step. So do you record when that consultation does not take place?
Are you talking about the placement consultation?
Well, let's start there. The placement consultation does not take place, is that recorded?
So we certainly record. I can definitely say to you, we do record where we consult as required under the legislation.
Do you record if that does not take place?
I'm not sure that they would record that it does not take place, but I can certainly check that for you.
And in the case of other decisions, other than placement decisions, do you record whether consultation has taken place or not?
So in terms of our practice, what we do is absolutely reflect who we've consulted with and the outcome of those consultations in terms of reflecting the different perspectives and also ultimately our rationale for decision-making.
So are you able to audit, for example, how many times an officer has failed to consult with an organisation in decisions other than placement decisions?
Not without, and it's more to do with the fact you'd have to get down to the individual case file by case file level, and you'd have to go through that. But I just wanted to flag for you, that's actually one of the really important issues that Snake have raised with the National Working Group about how do we capture information so that we can actually respond to audit questions in the future?
But it's fair to say that information's not being reliably or systemically captured centrally by your department at the moment?
No, and that'd be because, obviously, it's a client management system rather than a performance system. But we will seek to remedy that over time.
Thank you.
Ms. Bennet, are you planning on having a break before we conclude today?
The Chair has read my mind. I was just about to say I've been directed to ask for a moment for a break. If it's a convenient time for the Commissioners, it is a convenient time in my line of question.
And the schedule calls for 15 minutes, is that how long you want?
Could we shave it to 10?
Yes, we could. All right, we'll adjourn for 10 minutes. Done.
The Royal Commission has adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Ms. Bennet.
Thank you, Chair. Now, Ms. Taylor, there have been some discussions over the last few days about structured decision-making tools, and I'm going to refer to those as SDMs. I'd like to ask you a few questions about those. Do you understand the SDMs to be validated in relation to First Nations communities?
I would certainly say to you that they're validated for each of the respective state populations. When we engage with the Children's Research Centre, they certainly have validated, in our case, for example, for South Australia. But I don't know that I can, I'm not quite sure whether they've actually specifically validated, you know, the Aboriginal population in South Australia.
And you heard the evidence this morning from Commissioner Lowry and Commissioner Lewis that these instruments are generally not, are not necessarily responsive to First Nations issues?
I didn't hear their evidence, but I've received advice about their point. And I think you're talking, or you've received evidence from Professor Claire Tilbury, who's done a lot of research in this space. I'd certainly defer to her knowledge there. What I will say is that...
I'll just, well, I might just come back to those matters. I'd just like to go through a few questions about the SDM at this stage to lay some groundwork about it. So it's fair to say the department doesn't, at least doesn't know if it's validated for First Nations people. Is that fair?
No, what I would say is it's validated for the South Australian population. Generally, when we engaged the Children's Research Centre in 2017 to do that validation, they'll have done it there. What I don't know is they separately did the Aboriginal proportion of the population separately. I don't know that.
Yes, so you don't know if it was validated for First Nations people separately?
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. Now, I'd like to just draw some comparisons between different SDMs. I understand that different SDMs are used at different stages of decision-making. I'd like to talk to you about the SDM that is used at the point of screening in. So this is the point, and it's in your statement at SAG dot 0001 dot 0002 dot 1174. Now, as I understand it, when a person is screened into the system, that is, they are identified as being at a risk of harm or likelihood of harm so as to trigger the involvement of your department, is that fair?
It's really too, I mean, at the screening point, what it helps us is whether the notification requires a response and what response time. At that point, that's really the purpose of the SDM at the screening and response priority assessment.
Yes, so if the SDM tells you that there is a risk or likelihood of harm, that will trigger your involvement with that child and family, is that right?
It's certainly a guide to our call centre staff. One of the things I was just going to flag is, of course, what we say to our staff is, we need you to exercise your professional judgment. The tools are a guide to support that professional judgment.
Well, we might come back to that. So at page, could the operator put pages six and seven up on the screen together? That is point 1181 and point 1182? Because together these are the screening tool, as I understand it. Thank you, operator. Now, as I understand it, it is necessary, and perhaps the operator could highlight on the second of those pages, the initial screening recommendation section, that appears below the bolded heading. And that says, "Screen in at least one harm or likelihood of harm ground was selected. Screen out no harm or likelihood of harm ground was selected." Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
So the recommendation is that if, accepting that there is a discretion that I'll come to, at least on its face, a child or young person should be screened in if one of the criteria under harm or likelihood of harm is ticked, is that right?
Is selected, yes.
Yes. Could the operator please highlight likelihood of harm that appears directly above the screening recommendation and overrides? Now, this is one of the categories of likelihood of harm. And there are two that I'd like to discuss with you. The first is L03, mental health. Now, as I understand it, mental health is, in this tool, identified as a potential harm to the child. Is that, is that fair?
It's identified, yeah, as a likelihood of harm. That needs to be explored.
Yes, so a tick to that box will lead to that child or young person effectively entering the orbit of your system.
It's going to mean that it's likely to be a notification that's screened in, yes.
Yes. Now, do you, is there an evidence base that suggests that mental health, that any deficit in mental health leads to a risk of a parenting deficit?
So what I was going to say to you is, in relation to this, I'll appreciate I'm not a practitioner, and I've obviously attached these various tools to my statement that really clearly outline how that's provided. I'm very happy to take on notice this question because it'd be the first to say, I wouldn't be able to talk to you about the evidence that sits behind this in terms of mental health. And I imagine you also will want to ask me about intellectual disability.
I will. Is there a risk that you, that your department in this tool conflates mental health or intellectual disability with a parenting deficit?
As I said, I'm really happy to take this on notice. But what I would say to you is, it's not necessarily that it's a parenting deficit. It's more in relation to the likelihood of harm.
Well, that's my question. Someone with an intellectual disability doesn't necessarily present a risk of harm to their child, do they?
So this is where the validation's important from the population level. So going back to the work that the Children's Research Centre does for all jurisdictions who uses SDM, this is why it's essentially an actuarial tool. And so this will have drawn upon evidence and validation. But as I said, in terms of deep dive and understanding of this, I wouldn't be doing you a service to talk to the evidence that sits behind it.
Ms. Taylor, I'm...
Yes, but what does it mean to you? I think that's what perhaps Ms. Bennet is getting at. You may not be able to tell us what the reasoning process was behind this structure. What do you understand the point of this document? And in particular, the references to mental health and intellectual disability?
So what I understand, and thank you, Commissioner, it's an important question. What I understand is that it asks our call centre staff, and obviously it's part of the guide, as part of their professional judgment, to think about the impact that a parent's mental health might have upon their ability to provide a safe environment for a child or young person. And, you know, going back to our legislation, you know, are they at risk of harm or likelihood of harm? And so in terms of mental health, no, it's not that everyone with mental health will necessarily harm their child. But what we do know is that, as I said earlier, when we see our data, we know that it's something like 75% of parents where we've seen significant issues about domestic violence, over 50% where the parents have mental health issues, and over 50% where they've had parental substance abuse. So from a predictive actuarial model, what we know is there's a likelihood, there's harm. That's what we have to explore with this.
Well, I'm going to explore that with you in a moment through another tool. But I just think it's really important that we go back to my question before. Because my question to you was, an intellectual disability does not necessarily indicate a lack of parenting capacity, does it? And bear in mind that people are listening to your answer who have an intellectual disability.
No, it doesn't.
That's right. And having a mental health difficulty does not necessarily mean you have a parenting deficit, does it?
No, it doesn't.
No. Now, in fairness, I want to be clear, because it is not simply those boxes alone. They are accompanied by notes as to their application at page 23, which is dot 1198. But there's the tick box, so there is what I'd suggest to you is quite a blunt and unnuanced instrument. And it is underpinned by these notes, L03, mental health. And it says here, "A carer has a mental health problem that negatively impacts on care and protection of the child to the extent that," and it goes on. And I just want to pause there. I think your evidence, Ms. Taylor, was that you're not in a position to tell us when a mental health deficit will have an effect of presenting a risk to the child. That's right, isn't it? You're not an expert who can do that.
And no, I'm not a...
Are your call centre staff experts who can do that?
Yes, they are. So unlike me, our staff who work in the call centre are qualified social workers. And they're provided with quite significant training and support to be able to make these sorts of assessments. And that's guided by a lot of work that we do in that space.
So what are the qualifications of your call centre staff? They are all social workers with bachelor's degrees?
They are social workers, and in fact, in South Australia, we're even more narrow than some of the other jurisdictions. We actually have the requirement that you've undertaken the Bachelor of Social Work. We have some other qualifications more broadly that we've just opened it up to allied health professionals. But no, they are child development focused, but predominantly, we are a department of social work.
Now, I think you tell us at paragraph 44 of your statement that the suspicion of a mental health problem can lead to people being streamed into the system. Can you have a look at that for me? It might be the wrong reference. I might need to come back to that. Now, you don't have a definition of mental health in this tool that I can see. Is that right?
Not that I'm aware of, but as I said, not being a practitioner who uses it every day, I could be doing you a disservice.
Well, they're not medical practitioners that are using it every day, are they?
Uh, no.
No. And the concept of intellectual disability is a relatively broad concept. Is, I can't see a definition of that included in the tool. Are you aware if a definition is applied consistently?
No, that I'm not.
Okay. Is it fair to say that once a child or young person is screened in, then a statutory barrier to their removal has been removed? They're in the system.
They're certainly in the Child Protection System. I'll totally agree with you on that.
Yes.
One of the things that I would-
Now, in fact, yes. Commissioner Laurie gives evidence that First Nations parents' experience of disability and their levels of disadvantage make it more likely that their families will come to the attention of the South Australian Department. Is there a risk that the combination of being First Nations and having an intellectual disability or a mental health problem raises the risk that you will enter the system?
I, I think I said earlier, when we have a look at our data, particularly about those families and particularly parents who are notified to us, in terms of Aboriginal families and parents, it's certainly fair to say they are reported to us at much higher rates than the general population. And we know that from the work that has been led by Professor John Lynch and certainly Dr. Rhiannon Pilkington, and also supported by the Australian Centre for Child Protection. So, it's certainly the case. We're seeing more reports. As I said earlier, actually, the three big ones for us, it's not about disability. What we're seeing is concerns about domestic and family violence. We're seeing concerns about mental health, and we're seeing concerns about parental substance abuse.
Ms. Taylor, it's Commissioner Atkinson here. I would just find it really helpful if you would answer the question you were asked rather than answering another question you might prefer to be asked. Perhaps if Ms. Bennet could repeat the question. I'm sorry, it's not the first time I've felt like this, but really, I think I would like to hear at least the answer to the question Ms. Bennet asked. Perhaps if you'd ask it again, Ms. Bennet.
I understand Commissioner Mason has a question. I might defer to Commissioner Mason.
Thank you very much. In the evidence that was given by Natalie Lewis, she, at the end of her evidence, she presented to the hearing a graph tracking the substantiation rate over the last 20 years in Queensland and tracking it against changes in policy and service delivery and inquiries over the 20-year period, which, which really was of interest to the commissioners. So, my, my question is, if, if South Australia would be interested or willing to provide a similar document to the Royal Commission tracking the substantiation rates perhaps over a similar period for Aboriginal First Nations children?
Commissioner, I think it'd be a really good thing we presented that because I think you're right. It's important to reflect policy changes, legislative changes, but what's actually been happening about both investigations and substantiations? So, yes, from a South Australian perspective, it will take some time for us to construct that, but I'm very happy to provide that. What I can tell you is, the substantiation rate here is pretty equivalent. It's actually the investigation rate that we see some differences, but we'll draw that out in data for you.
Thank you. And I'm also interested in the, the social determinants of health because we know with First Nations parents with disability and their intersection with child protection, the issue of housing is a, isn't a really important factor. And I'm also interested in the picture of that in South Australia in terms of community-controlled housing. And if that has changed over the years, in terms of particularly public housing, how that, how that has been managed over the last 20 years? Because I, from memory, having lived in South Australia for many years, the arrangements in the South Australian Housing Trust through Aboriginal community-controlled decision-making was very effective because it was a South Australia-wide programme. But that programme was changed. I'm not too sure when, but, and whether that factor of being, that factor of able to be able to provide housing in terms of crisis around domestic and family violence, issues to do with disability, women, I think that that's also an important factor. So, I'll leave that for you. But I would be grateful if you could arrange that for the Royal Commission.
Yeah. Look, I can certainly say, and I think Lois would be able to join me with this. We see housing as one of the most critical factors. We have a lot to do with the South Australian Housing Authority. Because as you quite rightly say, sometimes we're looking for significant supports for women escaping domestic violence. It might be a family who's been experiencing overcrowding or housing stress, and we need some support and assistance. I will need to get some further advice about when those arrangements with community housing change. Because as you'll appreciate, I've only been in SA for four years. But I would say to you, the work that this government is currently doing, particularly in relation to housing, and particularly for women, and particularly women who've experienced domestic violence, is significant.
Ms. Taylor, following up on Commissioner Atkinson's intervention, can I suggest that sometimes a simple yes will, will suffice? Thank you. Yes, carry on, Ms. Bennet.
Thank you, Chair. And perhaps the graphic could be removed for now. I think, Ms. Taylor, I was just asking you, by reference to Commissioner Laurie's evidence, but perhaps it need not be put that way. Perhaps I can simply ask you, as a person who is the, in the position that you were in, do you understand that there is a heightened risk for people who have a disability and who are First Nations? Are they at heightened risk of contact with your department?
It's certainly the case that Aboriginal people are at risk and heightened risk of contact with our department in relation to, it's not been my experience, and this is why I want to be really clear. It's not been my experience that parents with a disability are at heightened risk. And that's only because, and I think this is one of these ones where it's not a yes-no, because often what we discover is, we haven't had, the parents don't, aren't aware of their disability, and neither are we. But certainly, it's the case, yeah.
I'd like to ask you a little bit about parenting capacity assessments. You say in your statement that, and I'm at paragraph fifty-four of your statement, you tell us that intellectual functioning assessments may be undertaken as a standalone or as part of a formal parenting capacity assessment. Now, I think your evidence is to the effect that if a person does not agree to a parenting capacity assessment, they can be compelled to undertake one. And you say here, "Information may emerge through the family, observations by practitioner, or from service providers or professionals, that a parent may be living with a disability that has not been formally diagnosed. In this instance, the department may request the parent undergo an assessment, or if absolutely essential and consent cannot be obtained, utilise the power under section thirty-six of the Act to direct a parent to undergo a parenting capacity assessment." That's your evidence. Is that right?
That's correct.
I wanted to take you to section thirty-six and help me to understand how that direction power works. Because section thirty-six provides that if the chief executive reasonably suspects that a child or young person is at risk as a result of a lack of parenting capacity on the part of the parent, guardian, or other person, et cetera, the chief executive may, by notice in writing, direct the parent, guardian, or other person to undergo an approved parenting capacity assessment. Is that the power you're referring to?
It is.
Are you conflating an intellectual, are you conflating a disability with a lack of parenting capacity?
No.
Well, it's not actually, in your statement at paragraph fifty-three, you say that if a parent is living with a disability that's not been diagnosed, they may need an assessment, and you can compel them. But you can't compel them simply because you suspect a disability, can you?
No.
Right? And so, in your statement where you say, where a person doesn't consent, you can use section thirty-six to require that consent. You can't do that simply because they may be living with a disability and are declining to have a parenting capacity assessment, can you?
If absolutely essential and consent. That's correct. And as per my statement, it's why we, we put in the reference in paragraph fifty-three about if absolutely essential. Because it goes back to the purpose of the parenting capacity assessment, why we're-
I don't want to interrupt you, Ms. Taylor, but time is short. I just want to be clear because your statement seems to indicate that a person with a disability who's declining to have an assessment can be compelled to do so. And I'd like to suggest to you, that's not correct evidence.
No, what I'm saying there is, if we are seeking to undertake a parenting capacity assessment, and if one of the issues we think that we need to explore as part of the parenting capacity assessment is the ability of a parent with a disability to discharge that, what I'm saying is, we're going to try and seek that if it's absolutely essential by consent. It's our least preferred method to have to mandate it.
Why a parent with a disability? Why is it not sufficient that they are not parenting their child properly? Why do you have to suspect a disability?
I think it's probably inelegant framing of the evidence, because you're absolutely right. The legislation is very clear in thirty-six, too, that it goes to the question of the lack of parenting capacity. What sometimes we're looking at is what is impacting on that parenting capacity.
That's right. And a disability, as we've discussed, does not necessarily do so, does it?
No.
And being First Nations does not necessarily impact upon your parenting capacity?
No.
No. Now, I wanted to, in the time I have left, I wanted to ask you a few questions about the status of implementation of various recommendations from previous reports. And I think, Ms. Boswell, that this is primarily from your statement. As I understand it, there are about 212 recommendations from the Child Protection System Royal Commission. Are you able to tell the commission about the status of those recommendations?
Of the 212 recommendations from the Royal Commission? We have a report that is actually administered by the Department of Child Protection that reports against the status of the 212 recommendations. And so, we can refer to the report, but off the top of my head, no, I can't recite all 212 recommendations in this.
No, I mean, as in, is there, is there a record kept of how each department is tracking against each of the recommendations? Is that right?
Yes, there is. And as I understand it, it's reported to Parliament as well, yes.
And are you, are any of those recommendations not accepted by government?
Actually, the reason I'll let Ms. Taylor answer is because, in fact, she chairs the, the cross-departmental board that looks at that. I really want to have a chance to, to answer some evidence. However, that is, she does chair it. And, and it is a cross-departmental role. And there was, and I was not responsible when the Royal Commission recommendations first came in. There are a few that are not fully accepted, but Ms. Taylor knows those better than me.
Are you able to tell the commissioners, Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, look, there were 260 recommendations from what I refer to as the Nyaland Royal Commission. And that report came down in August of 2016. The former government accepted 256 of those. And I only checked yesterday because I thought I was going to get this question in another matter yesterday. To date, some 212 of those 256 recommendations have been completed. And under our Safe and Well Annual Report, and I can provide a copy of that to you if you don't have a copy, it actually shows the status of those that are in the planning phase and those that are in the implementation phase. What we also talked, the opportunity, was with the Federal Royal Commission into institutional responses to child sexual abuse to also pick up their 256 recommendations. So, for our sins, 512 recommendations in total. So, we've taken the opportunity to report against the whole group.
Right. And what's the timeline for implementation?
So, under Nyaland, it was three phases. Phase one went to the end of 2018. Phase two went to the end of 2019. And we're now just in phase three, and I think that wraps up in 2022.
All right. Now, I must, I'd like to leave some time for the commissioners to ask any additional questions that they have. I wanted to, and so perhaps, perhaps, Chair, I'll, I'll complete my question in there and defer to the commissioners with any final questions.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson.
Interested in, sorry, I'm interested in the relationship between yourself and the commissioner that we heard from this morning, April Laurie. What role does she have in informing the policy of your department?
Commissioner, she plays a really critical role. As she would have pointed out to you, she's the commissioner for Aboriginal children, young people in South Australia. And one of her areas of priority is child protection. We meet with Commissioner Laurie on a six-weekly basis. She's a member of our Expert Aboriginal Advisory Committee. In addition to that, from time to time, quite appropriately, Commissioner Laurie will raise issues with us on an individual or a systemic basis where she's got a particular concern about a matter or a case. I think it's fair to say, one of the most critical pieces of feedback she's given us, which is influencing how we're going to restructure the department, is the critical need to have Aboriginal staff upfront and available. So, when Aboriginal families come into contact with the system, they're actually dealing with Aboriginal staff. So, we're going to actually do some further work to actually bring that forward and invest further staff there. So, I'd say to you, we don't always agree, but it's a critical role, and it's one that is absolutely important to outcomes for Aboriginal children.
And Commissioner Laurie is also involved in the expert panels for our department as well and has been involved and consulted on the Aboriginal co-design principles that we've been redesigning the early intervention system with, as well as the Aboriginal system design criteria that we are using to establish a new early intervention approach.
Thank you.
Commissioner, carry on.
One question, thank you, for Ms. Taylor. Ms. Taylor, at your, in your statement at clause fifty-six, when you talk about the conducting of, conducting an assessment of safety risk, and you say that the department is relying on cross-government service systems to assist in identifying and sharing relevant information pertaining to a parent's disability status. How would you describe that cross-government service system? Are they consistent in the way they collect and assess and provide information, or is it different?
It's, I would say, Commissioner, it's fairly consistent. Probably the two big agencies- Probably the two big agencies, um, obviously health, as you'll appreciate, is a critical interface for us there. Um, less so for parents, um, but for children, education is obviously the other agency that we have a lot to do with. But there's always room for us to be more consistent.
Okay, so what you're saying, that you have encountered challenges from time to time, or in terms of contingency? Is that a fair characterisation?
Yeah, that's a fair, um, uh, characterisation.
Uh, thank you, no further questions, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, um, can you just clarify something for me? The document entitled Assessment Framework for DCP Staff, what's the status of that document?
That forms part of our Manual of Practice, uh, Commissioner. Uh, that's what, um, when our staff are undertaking assessments, that's the framework that we, uh, ask them to pay attention to.
So further to the questions Ms. Bennet asked, if one looks at page twenty-three of that document, which is S A G dot O O O one dot O O O two dot O two seven one, one sees that the domain of assessment is parents' ability to meet the child or young person's needs. And two of the criteria are as follows, the first is mental health, including depression and suicidal behaviour, anxiety, post-traumatic stress and diagnosed or suspected personality disorders. And two down are, the next one is cognitive or intellectual difficulties. So this is a document that is provided to the caseworkers, and it's up to them to interpret what those expressions mean in the particular case, is it?
Um, this is part of the suite of documents that we provide to our staff, and it's also accompanied by, uh, learning and development, because you're right, what we don't want is everyone to interpret that differently, which is why we do a lot of, um, learning sessions with all our staff enrolling out the assessment framework and the manual of practice.
What sort of, uh, training would be given or explanations given of the references, for example, to depression, anxiety, their significance, or the significance of intellectual difficulties?
Um, Commissioner, one of the, um, key staff we have in the department is, um, um, uh, psychiatrist, that, um, we were lucky enough, she previously, um, headed up Child and Youth Mental Health Services here in South Australia, she's now come to work for us, and quite rightly, as I think someone flagged earlier, um, sometimes these are things that aren't necessarily, um, well-known by us, but in fact require health expertise. So certainly Dr. Prue McAvoy is one of the experts we draw upon in providing this training, along with our psychologists and others in our learning and development area. Um, it's not, um, one where we just think it's, you know, just descriptions, we need to really embed this. And I'll absolutely own, we will continue to need to do this as we have new staff come on board, so that we have a considered understanding of what do we mean.
So the way of ensuring consistency and continuity is for staff to participate in the presentations made by the psychiatrists you mentioned and/or psychologists? Is that how it works?
And other, and other, um, obviously there's also, um, uh, professional supervision that we provide, and also case consultation, but obviously, learning and development is sort of like our foundational piece. We obviously then need to provide professional, um, supervision, um, to staff, and we also support that by, um, case consultation. The other one that I don't think I've talked about is, we also do complex case reviews. So what we recognise is that no one, um, staff member has all of the expertise, and we need to bring this together.
Yes, thank you very much. Ms. Bennet, in the seven minutes that are left, is there anything further you want to develop? Unless there's, uh, I noticed we haven't had any appearances from, from South Australia, but, uh, I understand, uh, there is a council present in the room, is that, is that right?
Uh, that is, uh, correct, Commissioner, my name is Golding, uh, and, uh, I formally appear, uh, for the state of South Australia. I have been, uh, in the room, uh, for the duration of the hearing, but at a sufficient social distance.
Yes, no, I, I asked at the beginning of the day whether there was an appearance for South Australia, but it's good to know that South Australian Council adopts such a reticent posture. Very good, thank you. Um, is there anything else that, I take it, Mr. Golding, you've got no questions?
Um, if I have the opportunity, there is one thing I would clarify, uh, with, uh, Ms. Taylor. Um, Ms. Taylor, you were asked some questions earlier by, uh, Commissioner, uh, Sackville, the Chair, uh, about the, uh, the five placement principles, and you indicated that there's a bill currently before the State Parliament that's going to seek to enshrine them. I'm not sure you necessarily understood the Commissioner's, uh, question, uh, but it was to the effect of, if they're only now being enshrined, how is it that your evidence can be that they have already been observed in practice when one has regard to what might be a conflicting situation in section seven of the current Act? Perhaps before Ms. Taylor answers, uh, that, does that reflect the question that you were trying to ask earlier, Commissioner?
With admirable clarity, Mr. Golding, uh, it's produced, uh, uh, crystalline presentation compared with my own faltering, faltering attempts to put the question.
Um, Ms. Taylor, are you able to, do you understand that question, are you able to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, and apologies, Commissioner, I think I had lost, um, my ability earlier. Um, what I can say is that we have sought to implement the five domains through policy and practice, recognising that at the moment they don't exist in legislation. And there may be occasions when that policy and practice may seem to be at odds, um, with the critical provisions about safety. Obviously, the legislation will always take, um, precedence in that arrangement, but our experience is, we need to weave safety through all of the areas, um, including right from the commencement, domain of prevention, right through partnership and the others.
Thank you, so when you say that it was, uh, already a matter of policy, and we acknowledge that policy is subservient to the legislation, uh, that issue of policy, is that a formal policy? Is it something that all of the practitioners on the ground know about and actively, uh, seek to implement? Or if I'm wrong about that, how is it that that policy has existed to date?
Yeah, it's existed in a couple of different forms, and I think Ms. Bennet was also, um, coming to this earlier. It's reflected, obviously, in our Manual of Practice, it's reflected in our Aboriginal Action Plan, and it's also been reflected in specific training that we've had snake-deliver to all of our staff about, um, the implementation of the five domains, and we've followed up with that. But as you'll appreciate, I'll be very excited when it's reflected in legislation.
Thank you, that was the only matter I wish to raise.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Golding. Um, I see that, uh, Ms. Boswell took the sensible precaution of moving one point five metres away.
Maybe, maybe point six seven metres, yeah.
Uh, in the three and a half minutes left, Ms. Bennet, is there anything else you want to do?
No, Chair, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, I, I understand we're going to resume at nine AM Brisbane time tomorrow, ten AM Sydney, is that correct?
If the Chair pleases.
Yeah, all right, we'll adjourn until nine AM Brisbane time tomorrow, ten AM Sydney. Uh, thank you very much, um, for your appearances today, um, Ms. Boswell and, uh, and Ms. Taylor. Uh, we appreciate your assistance to the Royal Commission, we will now adjourn.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.